Yeah, there you go. We're gonna start passing the bucket to start charge admission. Roll call. You ready, Eric? You're on.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
I'm here.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
And Supervisor Bushnell and Madron are on their way. However, they're not here at the moment.
Ten o'clock meeting, okay. Salute to the flag, please. Any modifications?
Good morning, Chair Bone. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
And no consent calendar. So we will... Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Jessica Maciel, who is Deputy County Administrative Officer in my office, will start today's budget hearings, which is the kickoff, really, to the fiscal year 2425 budget process, with providing your board an update on the budget outlook, and then also the Budget Ad hoc will give you all a little update on their interactions with departments through this process. And then we will move into budget presentations from a number of departments today, and then we'll continue the budget presentations to May 20th, when the remainder of the departments will present. So with that, Jessica, we'll take it away.
Good morning, Chair Bone and members of the board. As CIO Hayes noted today before we start department budget presentations, I'm going to present a short presentation on a projection of the general fund. Nikki, if you don't mind pulling up the presentation. So we'll start with looking back at where we were at at mid-year. At mid-year, the 23, we talked about the 2324 budget and that it was adopted with an $18.4 million budget deficit. It was anticipated at that time that the general fund will end 2324 only utilizing $12.4 million, rather than the $18.4 million, which is a $6 million reduction from the budget. With that of the nearly $26 million estimated to be available in the fund for fiscal year 2425, as represented in the chart here, $5.3 million is Measure Z fund balance, resulting in a remaining $20.7 million in available general fund to fund fiscal year 2425. County Administrative Office staff are still reviewing the fiscal year 2425 budget submissions, including updated fiscal year 2324 year-end estimates, though initial review projects improvement in the estimated ending fund balance for the general fund. So our office has consistently been messaging that fund balance is one-time funds. This is not a sustainable funding mechanism and is only available to us due to a combination of conservative budgeting through the fiscal uncertainty of the last few years and unprecedented revenues during the COVID-19 pandemic. Ongoing structural deficit will eventually result in the general fund running out of fund balance. In order to establish a target, the Budget Ad hoc requested a projection as to when that is estimated to happen and what that means for departments. In order to make this projection, we made a number of assumptions, all of which are subject to variability. And those assumptions are listed here. They include 3% increases in salary and benefits and internal service fund charges. This is just the natural cycle of increases via the step system. 2% increases in property tax revenue, and then sales tax in Proposition 172, sales tax revenue provided by our contract with HDL companies. They provide our sales tax projections. And reduced general fund interest income over time due to reduced fund balance and reduced tax loss reserve fund transfers due to utilizing built-up fund balance in prior years. With that, this is what the projection looks like. Given the assumptions, it is projected that the general fund would dip into the negative shortly before the end of fiscal year 2526, which you'll see the estimated beginning fund balance there is negative $740,000. And then going into fiscal year 2627, the general fund could face a deficit of over $14 million. Keep in mind that this is based on anticipated actuals. Budgeted deficits are typically larger due to full funding of positions, including vacancies. So what does that look like for departments and services? Based on fiscal year 2425 general fund allocations, this would result in almost 20% cuts in general fund departments if applied across the board. Budget cuts at this level are not attainable without reductions in staffing and services. We reviewed this projection with departments in their budget meetings, and all departments expressed that this scenario would be devastating to their ability to deliver services. And this table shows a breakdown of what that would look like by department, by general fund department. So what's next? There are a number of factors that could impact the projection assumptions. Some improvements that could be possible or are more likely could be continued performance of property tax, reduced increases in salary and benefits, or improved starting fund balance. We estimated that property tax would be at 2%, but it has been performing higher than that. So if that were to continue, and salary and benefit increases, 3% is kind of a standard there, but if that were to be better than that, at only 2%, that would provide a large savings of $2.7 million. In our discussions, so where do we go from here? In our discussions with departments in their budget meetings, we talked about spreading out these reductions so we don't end up in this scenario. Due to the size of the deficit, there is not likely to be a revenue source that will bridge this gap in this timeframe. We will need to reduce expenditures. In fiscal year 2324, your board utilized voluntary furlough, a voluntary separation incentive program, and a hiring freeze. The VSIP will continue to provide savings to the general fund in the coming year, and your board may choose to utilize any of these options again. These alone will not provide enough savings, though. The best method to spread out reductions is to reduce staffing through attrition, though this method likely accompanies service reductions as well. In addition, your board directed our office to explore reorganization opportunities. That work is currently happening, and staff will return to your board on June 3 to present those options. And finally, I'll turn it over to the Budget Ad hoc to give their thoughts on our budget meetings and report out, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jessica, and thanks to everyone. Truly, it was a difficult set of meetings and a very productive set of meetings. So I'm really appreciative of Supervisor Bushnell and all of the staff who met with us and had some frank conversations. And I think the work is obviously ongoing. So I look forward to the reorganization discussion and hearing, you know, the collective report out from those who, you know, participated on the department head level. And, you know, I know we also have fellow electeds who are also department heads and appreciate, you know, all the work that they've put into that. So I'll just say, we, as you mentioned, we met with every department, had an opportunity to understand what additional requests for general fund allocations would be coming forward, and then talk about the elephant in the room, which is the structural deficit that we have going into the next, you know, that, as you've outlined, is really gonna hit in one and a half fiscal years, towards the end of the next fiscal year after this coming one. So I don't, I don't know if we have a ton of additional insight to provide at this point other than that we've had these conversations, we've talked about what options there could be. I will say I raised the questions around whether we can utilize more county facilities and, instead of rented facilities, which would help us in the long run, but it's not an immediate, short-term fix. It's something that would be a longer-term item. And additionally, we talked about some of the IT and efficiency needs that departments have that would help streamline their operations and, to some degree, make it easier to do their work with potentially fewer staff in the future, which is a, you know, a difficult conversation, I think, for every single department, because everyone's feeling really like they're already doing more with less. And so it was, I'll just say, it was very difficult to, to propose these, this level of cuts, but the math doesn't lie. The money we have in our account is what we have, and so I think we need to be considering every single expenditure and through that lens moving forward. I think there were some other specific questions we had around efficiencies, and those are being explored by the departments during the conversations with the CIO, which I appreciate, and I look forward to hearing what, what ideas they have. And I think we will be looking to every single department head to help us understand how this could work, because we don't, we aren't the subject matter experts on every single department's operations and where fun, you know, funds could be used differently, where expenditures could be curtailed, where, you know, where adapted services can happen, because now we're also starting to look through the lens of mandated services and essential services and kind of trying to parse what that looks like, because we have a lot of mandated services, and then we have a lot of services that we cannot do without. And so those are, you know, kind of inextricably connected. So those are initial thoughts, and I'm certainly interested to hear what Supervisor Bushnell thinks as well.
Thank you. I think that's a good synopsis, and I just want to really say thank you to the department heads. And there were a lot of tough conversations, and we did bounce back on them to say, how can you help, help us? And so coming into the future, you know, I, I do really look forward to that cooperation with department heads to see how we can balance our budget in the future. And it's gonna be a couple, you know, few lean years, and hopefully after that, we'll start digging ourselves out. I think Supervisor Arroyo did a good summation.
Is there any public comment on this item? See? Public? Saying none, I'll bring it back, and we can start our presentations. Who's up, number one? Aviation? No?
I can kick it off, Supervisor Bone. First... If we could first close out that last item to receive the...
Do we need to vote to accept, to receive that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Probably.
I'll move that we accept the report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I was letting her make it. That was unanimous, Nikki.
I accept the reality.
Speak things along.
Streamline motions.
Oh, come on now.
Okay, now we can start the department budget presentations. We have nine departments who will be presenting to you today. First up, we have Yana Valakovic with the UC Cooperative Extension, who will present on her program's budgets. And, did you have a PowerPoint?
I did. Nikki, were you able to receive it? Okay, terrific. Well, good morning, Chair Bone, members of the board and staff. It's a real pleasure to be with you today, and I'm really thrilled. I'm usually the last. So it's very exciting to go first. So I guess I'm gonna start with the good news. We are able to absorb the reduction in the ARFA, and so we're asking for no additional funds, and we are doing really well this year, not by great ingenuity, but by luck in hiring a really terrific new person and a change in sort of the, the structure and arrangement that is associated with her costs. And so we're in good shape this year. So I'm gonna give a few highlights of our program. As you know, we've been in partnership with this board since 1913, and we're the inaugural county that kicked off the Cooperative Extension Program in California and also nationwide. And so, you know, our motto is really about helping people help themselves, and so I'm gonna offer some highlights and bring a few ideas forward and a few, few thoughts in closing about where we are. And just for, you know, context and for those that are listening or watching online, who maybe not quite know who we are, we're a distributed program that's in connection with county government across California. We're in all 58 counties, and we have three main campuses that support us, and we provide that connection between the campus and the county experience. And we are a discretionary general fund department. And sometimes I describe us as your science team or your, your super team to work on some complex issues to really help both county government and the residents of our counties really improve their quality of life. And we work in a variety of different areas. Sometimes I feel like our three-legged stool is perhaps a little too big. We cover a variety of agriculture, natural resources, and healthy family and communities issues. So we have a variety of departmental goals, and I just really want to talk about bright futures. These are two pictures I've taken in the last couple of weeks, just thinking about the vibrancy of our communities and the vibrancy of our ecosystems, and really what role we serve in trying to help in the self-reliance of citizens. And, you know, thinking about our future economic opportunities and, and our workforce development work and how we can facilitate lots of public-private partnerships, as well as tribal relationships and tribal partnerships. So, you know, what is this future that we're gonna hold? Where sometimes I feel like we're locked in the past, but yet we have great opportunity on our forefront, such as our discussions that we're working on in wind energy, for example, and a whole variety of new things. So I'd like to share that we've had a lot of staff changes in the last year and a lot of really positive changes. So you'll see that the two names in green are supported by county funds. So this is a memorandum of understanding arrangement between our department and county government. So you provide one and a half staff, and our office manager retired this year, and we brought on Natasha Curtis, who is just knocking it out of the park, shall I say, and really hitting the ground well. And we're doing much better than where we've been at for a while. And then the names in black are permanent funded through the University of California, and we have some new people. Alec Domka, who's our Rural Economic Development Advisor, I think some of you have met him already. He's stationed in Del Norte, but covers both of our counties. You all know Kayla Nylander, our 4-H program representative. You met Lainey Quinn-Davidson. She's transitioning to becoming the Fire Network Director and working more at a statewide level. But the cool thing is we get to keep her in our office and get that local connection still. She has been replaced by Cleo Wolfley-Hazard, who I'll introduce later in the program as our regional fire advisor, and actually now covers both Del Norte and Humboldt, which is an improvement, because Lainey didn't cover Del Norte. So it's, it's nice to be back in our, our, our normal orientation. So most of our team basically are dual-county, both Humboldt and Del Norte. And if you don't know, I'm a department head in Del Norte County as well, so I've got staff in both counties. So that means that's three personnel systems, if you're counting, just for fun. And then you all know Jeff Sackhouse, of course. And then Eddie Tanner is the person who replaced, let's see if I can highlight, no, we can't see it on there, who replaced Edward Jarrow. He's our kind of classic farm advisor, horticulture of plants and specialty crops. He's really doing a great job. And then we have a variety of people that are soft-money funded, and those are in blue, and they all come through grants that our team writes to, to keep this, this team afloat and doing lots of great work. So we have a variety of educational programs. That's probably where you know us best, and we cover a whole lot of topics. And here's just some highlights of the work that we've been doing over the last year or so. Focus on specialty crops, climate resiliency, groundwater management, herd health management, range management techniques, soil health, agricultural finances. And then in the natural resources area, we, we continue to do our work in oak woodlands. And in fact, I've got a bill that's moving forward to even improve the oak woodland management policies that we've been working on for many years, so taking it one step further. Lots of work in wildland fire, as well as prescribed fire. We offer the Certified Burn Boss Program. We do a lot in home wildfire defense and mitigation, and then silviculture and biomass and offshore wind, and now a new theme around Cultural Fire 101. So offering some basic classes around how to understand cultural fire practices in partnership with the tribes. So additionally, we have four brand-name programs. You probably know 4-H is, is the cornerstone of our youth education arm. We also have a nutrition program called Expanded Food and Nutrition Education. And then we have two optional programs called the Master Gardener and Master Food Preserver Program. And these are really our kind of general public community outreach-oriented programs. But the neat part about them is that we offer training, especially through youth development, master gardeners and master food preservers, where folks come on as volunteers and then basically amplify the work that we do and extend that work into their communities. So we get a lot of translational effect and a lot of more partnership and tons and tons of volunteer hours to, to really help reach broad folks, broad components of our communities. And then because we're academics, we also have a lot of research going on. And now because our team is growing, I'm having a hard time putting it all on one slide. So I apologize for the words being small, but really I just want to, you know, highlight that we try and stay in front of issues, we try and do primary research in our communities, because it's hard to pull down guides or cost studies or, you know, best management practices from other geographic areas, because they just don't fit for us. You know, we're our own unique climate, we have our own unique issues. Eddie Tanner has been working in doing some novel cauliflower variety research, trying to fit a niche where there's a gap in cauliflower production in California, where we think if we can get this timed right, we may be able to open up a window for some new production capacity. So this year, he's just completing the first of those trials and, and had some success, some challenges, but is, I think, on the, on the mark for something that will be new and helpful. Working a lot with our dairymen to provide an alternative crop in the Ferndale and Lolita and also in the Arcade of Bottoms, so it's kind of an interesting way to look at these issues. We've been doing some new work in the virtual fence world and doing some trials around virtual fencing, which could be a great reduction and actually enable us to, to be able to graze some of those difficult areas that have been challenging to manage over the years. Jeff has been doing a lot in the illusion goose world, and there's some new, new developments along there that I think are exciting. And then, you know, I'll just bring forward that Cleo Wolfley-Hazard, who we just hired to replace Lainey, is doing some really novel work around fire and streams and water availability, as well as fire weather, and I think is gonna be able to up our game significantly in that set of interactions. As you know, when you get smoke, temperatures cool down, stream flow improves in level, because you get less photosynthesis during that time. It's actually kind of a positive benefit. But to be able to better understand that and think about it from a larger climatic perspective is gonna be, gonna be really useful. We are also trying to be able to hold on to this local food systems during emergencies project that we were intimately involved in, and I'll explain why that's a little complicated in a minute. We do also sponsor the Humboldt County Prescribed Burn Association, and in 2023, we got 100 people out on burns. So those are all volunteers, and lots of volunteer fire department and professional firefighters were in those attendee lists. We had 250 people attend our trainings in the last year. This is just in Humboldt itself, and we have both kind of a more northern PBA Prescribed Burn Association and then a southern Humboldt-oriented one that's, that's really coordinated by Kai Ostrow. Henry Holberg is our staff person. He's the one on the top left, and he joined us about a year ago and is really doing fantastic work, especially in the training front, and being able to bring a lot more skill to the folks that are interested in being able to support prescribed fire or get prescribed fire work done on their land. As you know, it's really one of the cheapest alternatives for vegetation management and is very effective in fuel reduction, as well as ecosystem improvements, invasive plant management, as well as cultural management. So as I wrap up, I have this sort of catch-all slide to say some of the things that have been going on this year. I'm gonna start with the hard news. I think some of you are aware of this, but maybe not all of you. But Dorena Espinoza, who is our Youth Families and Communities Advisor, unfortunately developed cancer this year and passed away in October. And so there she is with her two boys, and so it's been a rough time for us and our team trying to pick up the programs that she ran, as well as just deal with the emotional loss of, you know, one of your core team, as well as someone who led the 4-H program, led our nutrition program, and was so intimately involved in these food system projects and really our primary contact with the tribes. So it's, it's just been, it's been a rough year. We are in active recruitment for her right now, and I will let you know when we start to have the interview process. The amazing news is, the second time in my career I've seen this, so I've been in extension 24 years, that the university basically gave us a position back. So usually when someone leaves, we have to go through a re-justification process, and I've only seen it happen twice now, so this would be the second time. So I'm optimistic that we'll find someone who will be able to fill some of her shoes. And she is, was both a county and university employee, and she worked for DHHS for, I think, about 10 years. So I'll probably come back later this year with the option for her proclamation just to signify the, the contributions she's made to our community. Really, really outstanding lady. One of the things that we were able to do, which surprised me, on the lower left is Jessica Rebaholtz. She's got the book in the background. She was hired originally under Dorena Espinoza to run our nutrition program, and she left during COVID and recently came back to us and said, I would like to resume the work I've been doing. So we've been able to pick her back up in the last month and a half, and she's just hit the ground running. So we're able to continue our nutrition programs even in the absence of, in the absence of Dorena's position being filled. Lainey Quinn-Davidson, as I mentioned in the, in the middle there, is just doing terrific work at state policy levels, bringing tons and tons of good work to all of California and, and to our home communities. And so as I mentioned earlier, she's transitioned, and that's a picture on the upper right of Cleo Wolfley-Hazard, who's replaced her. He joined us in January and is doing a bit, hasn't been in county very much yet, because he's got children that he's trying to transition with the school year. So I'll bring him before your board, and you'll have a chance to meet him soon. And then I just want to highlight a couple of fun, fun things, sort of. Well, on the very right is the Forestry Institute for Teachers, and we've been doing this for 27 years now. And it's, it's still very exciting to see how much enthusiasm we're getting and how much more interest and more framing around the workforce development side than we thought about it in the past. So on the right is a teacher who, who came last year and just got so enthusiastic that, you know, the joy that's expressed in that picture, I thought you all might appreciate. And then I'll finish this sort of random hodgepodge of work. As you know, I do lots of work in state policy, and that's Ricardo Laura and me. And I'm trying very hard to really advance our insurance issues. And in fact, I'm, I'm leaving for Sacramento this afternoon for more work in that space. And I, I've made it into the, the small fold in trying to get into the solution space. And so I'm optimistic that we're gonna find some, some pieces that we can, can, we can grab onto. Though, as you know, it's gonna be a rough ride for a while to, to navigate all of the, the challenges that have come before us. But this wildfire issue has really unearthed the climate vulnerability and the overall, overall vulnerability that our entire financial system has been structured around with this basically plan of last resort, which is... plan of last resort, which is insurance. And in the insurance industry and the reinsurance industry has really recognized how vulnerable we are in California, as well as how vulnerable we are to all kinds of climate related challenges. And so they are in a great process of readjustment. So I'll conclude by saying, you know, what does what do we do for you all? It's been 111 years, and, you know, I think we're pretty good at the space of innovation. You know, we've brought the PBA model, the Prescribed Burn Association model to California as just one illustration. We are fortunate to really be your local community's trusted experts on a variety of issues. And we're able to provide that bridge between communities to be able to share innovation as well as to connect to the University of California and their great expertise. On the upper right, I just wanted to highlight this is some of the folks that we've been able to bring in the oak woodland space in the last year. That's two faculty from UC Berkeley, colleagues from Marin, expert researchers from UC Davis. And so we're, you know, we're able to pull a lot of folks here to be able to help. We've also been able to pull a lot of folks recently in the economic development space and the wind space. So look forward to sharing some highlights about that work. So I think I'll conclude by thanking you all, see if you have any questions, and just saying that I will be able to to give back and be able to support our our financial needs in the coming year. So thank you for your ongoing support in our partnership and your investment in the community through us.
Thanks, Yana. It amazes me that it's 11 years ago when we had the celebration dinner at Redwood Acres, and the fair was actually dedicated to the 11 years. Wow. Bring it back. Any questions? Supersir Royal?
I know this is about your budget and not your programs, but I raising the cauliflower trial thing again made me think, is there, you know, interest and evidence in kind of collaborating to address agricultural challenges posed by climate change where, you know, I know other crops are probably likely candidates for our community as as things change? Any thoughts on that and what opportunities we might have in that space?
I think it's a terrific question. I mean, clearly, we have a lot of arable land, and we have more water than most of California does. So I think we're having, you know, some reckoning and some recognition as as a system about where things are likely to go and what that potential is. We're definitely getting a few inquiries, nothing really substantial yet, but, you know, I think the art of the long view on this one is important. I feel really fortunate that we were able to replace Deborah Jarrow and have someone on team that can be in that in that role to be able to think through the long run on this one. And, you know, Eddie Tanner has lots of experience in variety trials, and so we'll begin, we'll be able to kind of continue to to work on those issues. Right now, I don't see any major challenges with our current crops and what we currently produce. But where I do see more challenges, we're starting to see some interesting forest health issues develop, and that's often because of more warmer temperatures than it really is water availability. But we're trying to keep an eye on all these climate related issues and and try and figure out how, if we need to transition folks, what we can do to to get in front of those issues and make sure that they've got the best available information.
Thank you. I'm really excited about the work you do with food security and food systems, and I think that's so important. So thank you.
Thanks.
Do we work with the bears on the quinoa? And the quinoa went like hell and then slowed down. Now I see it's back. I see they're planted again this year.
Yeah, a quinoa had, I mean, quinoa's super exciting, I think. You know, because it's dry farmed, which has huge potential for
Loves our climate.
It loves our climate, needs cold cooler temperatures, so it's going to hug close to the coast. That's why it's grown at the Andes, basically because of cool temperatures. But quinoa had some market challenges during COVID. People, you know, changed their shopping, and I think we're starting to see that tick back up. It has, I think, a lot of potential. Be really nice if we could do some of the processing here and as opposed to exporting it somewhere else for for the processing side. But we have, we have a great opportunity to to really see how quinoa develops. We don't have any University of California expertise in that grain in particular. The only expertise nationwide is in Washington State. And so we've had some conversation with those folks, but I think we'll continue to stay engaged there as much as as much as we can.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably the most exciting new crop we've
Yeah, I mean,
On a, on a, on a, on a commercial scale. I mean, Lungberg came in and
Right. Let's, I think it was 2015, 16, somewhere there. The the farm gate value of quinoa eclipsed over 640 acres, eclipsed all of row crop agriculture in Humboldt County
Yep.
In those 640 acres. So it's, it's highly valuable if we can, if the market stays together and and we can continue to refine how how we grow that product.
Great, thank you. Supersir Madon?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Yana, I'm always impressed by the work you all do in your department in not just doing the standard programs, which are fantastic, 4H and everything else, but constantly pushing the envelope and starting new programs and exploring new economic ventures and workforce development. In particular, I know that you and your staff have fought very hard over the years to create more exemptions in the Forest Practice Act, like oak woodland restoration, as well as small, you know, the zero to 150 feet, the 150 to 300 feet and all these other things. And we have a lot of forests that are 30 to 40 years old that are really primed for thinning and producing forest products. And I'm proud to say that I'm now a licensed timber operator, and I'm selling my first two loads of logs this week. So it's very exciting to be able to go through one's property and do the thinning and fuel reduction work, and then be able to recoup some of that cost through the sale of some of those logs because these exemptions exist. And the demand for this is so huge, and I know you know this, that it's almost impossible to get into the classes for an LTO. They're talking about possibly starting up some classes at CR to get your licensed timber operator certificate or license. And I think that'd be great because right now the demand is so high. The waiting list is huge, right? And you've got to go over to reading and stuff. So anyway, congratulations on all the work that you do. Thank you for working within the budget constraints that are coming up. And I very much look forward to the continued workforce development around all of this forest health work that is happening. It's also making our properties safer, you know? And thanks for your work in that insurance realm, too. So appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. You know, if I could add one little quip, which is kind of interesting. I sit on the Board of Forestry's Professional Foresters Examining Committee. And so I know a lot about the applicants that are coming in for the Licensed Foresters exam. And what's really interesting is that we offer lots of classes in forest stewardship and kind of just general forest management. And what we're seeing is that we're becoming key workforce development folks for lots of the NGOs that are trying to figure out how to professionalize and how to scale and develop the the years and experience and qualifications to be able to sit for the RPF exam. And so even though we're offering classes for landowners, we're finding that there's this whole niche of folks that didn't quite get the training they wanted and or realize they need now, and so they're trying to cross train themselves. And so we realize that we're a really key partnership partner in that whole workforce development frame, kind of across the board. So we'll, we'll certainly continue to do that work. And we're trying to, my colleague, Suzie Coker, and I have written some very large grants to really try and lift in that space, both in the post-fire arena as well as in the the pre-planning stage. So, yeah.
Great. You're dismissed.
Okay.
Okay, Chair.
Assessor?
Next, we have the assessor up, and Howard Leahy is here to present.
You're gonna have to get it right in front of you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So I do have a PowerPoint. Great, all right. Good morning, every board. Thank you for your time. Howard Leahy, Humboldt County Assessor. I'm going to present our budget, some of our accomplishments, and what what we're mandated to do in the state of California. So we are mandated and required to tax all property located in the county. This includes real property, business property, as well as personal property, for example, tractors, boats, and aircraft. We're also required to do a minimum of 24 audits of businesses each year and also apply property tax exemptions where they're appropriate for nonprofit organizations, homeowners exemptions, and disabled veterans. They were oversaw by the California Constitution, the California Revenue Taxation Codes, and then the Board of Equalization is oversight for all assessors in the state of California. What the State Board of Equalization does is it does guide the assessor in making sure that we're making fair and equitable evaluations. They do provide direction and for our offices for interpretation of California state tax laws. And they also do surveys every five years to make sure that we're maintaining those standards and we're completing the required assessments that we're supposed to do. Our last survey was done in 2021, and so we will be up again in 2026 for another survey. So our workload. So each each year, the assessor processes between 6,000 and 7,000 recorded documents. This this year, so far, we've done about 47,000, 4,800 documents. You'll see in the in the COVID years, you'll see some of the other data that went down for obvious reasons in 2020. Real property appraisals, we average between 5,000 to 7,000 per year. Again, you'll see 2020 where we're down to about 4,900, and that was during the peak of COVID, and it really affected property sales and and transactions during that timeframe. Currently, we've completed almost 5,100 appraisals. Business property assessments, we we do approximately almost 6,000 per year, including in that is we usually get about between 200 and 300 additional of new filings that we weren't aware of. And so you, so with that, we also process exemptions, like I said earlier. We currently have about 21,000, almost 22,000 homeowners exemptions, other types of property exemptions, 700 plus, and then disabled veterans at 525,000. The disabled veterans, depending on their qualifications, it it could be up to 250,000, I think we're at now, if they consider low income. If they're basic, it's like 160,000, somewhere in that in that neighborhood. There is some legislation out right now looking at possibly excluding 100% for disabled veterans, but that is still in the in the works, and nothing's really come about with that yet. Proposition 19, it has increased the workload on the assessors throughout the state. All the transfers have to be tracked now, and we, to the California Department of Fee and Tax Administration, as well as the BOE. We've, we've seen a large increase in the number of base share value transfers. And so in the past, before Prop 19, you were only allowed to transfer your base share value within the county. Now you can do it anywhere in the state. And we have, we have seen that that number triple in in numbers. And a married couple can do it three times each, so they can do it a total of six times. And so if you're going from, you know, Humboldt to Marin County or vice versa, you can take that with that base share value. So there potentially are some, some issues with tax revenue based on that. Supposedly, the state is supposed to be refunding the counties for any revenue lost because of Prop 19. Our first filings that we're, we're supposed to do with the state are next year, so we'll see what those numbers do. We don't know what's going to happen with that. But it has added more workload to the the assessor's office. And the same with the parent to child transfers, because that can be reversed at any time. If the child moves into the, has to move into the parent principal residence, and if they move out at any time, they're disqualified from that exclusion, and we have to reassess the property. So and so there's a tracking process that goes in with that as well. So that's, that's any, before with, before Prop 19, parent child transfers, they occurred and it, and it could be at any property. It didn't have to be a principal residence. And we didn't have to track it after it was transferred. So but now we have to track it. Total assessed values over the last few years, you can see that we're around, you know, four and a half percent increase each year. This last year, we were almost 6%. My preliminary evaluations, this year, we're going to be hitting the close to that 6% as well for our, our net tax roll. What that equates out to is approximately 20, that 16.5 billion equates to about 26 million and change to the general fund. Some changes. So recently, we have purchased annual license for some artificial intelligence software. This program called Just Appraise will actually read deeds for us and enters them into the property tax database for us, so we're not doing them manually. This is, has the potential of really increasing our ability to stay up to date and not have a huge backlog. We've incorporated some more efficient mailing for our annual statements that we're required to do. This year, we were able to reduce that process from about a month down to two weeks. And one of the, one of the biggest ones, we have a actually mailing machine where prior to that, we were actually physically putting stamps on everything that we sent out. And not only that we saved the process, but we also saved a lot in staff time as well. So there's a lot of savings in in salaries, and they could work on other things. We're also working on an appraisal automation program within our, in Megabyte, our property tax database, and it's called direct enrollment. It really will work in certain, only certain areas of the county, specifically like McKinleyville, parts of Eureka, Fortuna, where you have subdivisions that where each each residence is very similar. And so you're actually only make making minor changes, and so it automatically does the assessment for us, and all we have to do is quality control checks. And so we've de-allocated a couple of positions in the assessor's office, one assessment tech and a property transfer assistant. We had a retirement back in June of last year, and instead of rehiring for that position, that's what we used that funding to purchase Just Appraise. And it saved us probably about 40,000 to 45,000 a year in salary and benefits. Currently, our office staffing, we have 27 total. In 2019, we had 31. And actually, when I started in 2008, the assessor's office had 36 staff. So we've decreased it quite a bit. I think that, in my opinion, at 27 is probably the minimum to be able to continue to to produce the required assessments that we're supposed to do. Anything below that would be detrimental to not only our office, but to the county as a whole. Like I said, some of our accomplishments, we completed the tax roll last year and delivered a secured and unsecured role to the auditor on time. We're always looking for ways to be more efficient, and we found some processes, like says, automation of our mailing and the Just Appraised. And we've also looking at digitizing a lot of our records, and that is, and increased our e-filing for business properties, so electronic filing. This last year is approximately about 1,700 of those. Each year, that's increasing, and we're encouraging businesses to use that. Not only does it save them time, but it also saves the assessor staff time as well. We've increased our review of Prop 8. I think some of you probably got some phone calls about that. But we are required to do But we are required to do that annually, but just because of workload in the last couple of years, we haven't been able to do that. So this last year, with some of our more efficient ways that we're creating more time for staff, we're able to get more of a handle on those Prop eights. And a lot of those probably should have came been removed from Prop eight a few years ago, and so they're just happening now. So the actually, the taxpayer benefited by by that. Yeah. Anyways, and like I said earlier, you know, we do start timing a million of our business property statements. Like I said in the past, it probably took a month or more. We got it down to two weeks and which is huge. And so that those audit appraisers can work on the audits of the twenty-four that they're required to do. Investing in the assessor's office. So property taxes are one of the largest sources of discretionary revenue for the general fund. You know, as tax dollar as sales tax decreases, which we've seen in the last couple of years, it's critical that we maintain the appropriate staffing technology in the assessor's office. And tax dollars, they fund public safety, schools, fire districts, county roads, libraries, cities, special districts, and of course, the general fund. There was a study done back, and I think around two thousand and ten, the California state auditors had done a study showing that for every dollar invested in the assessor's office, there was an additional eleven dollars in revenue. I think that all of you have received a letter from Yvette Stowers, the executive director for the BOE, kind of stating some of that, how important it is for the assessor's office to be funded. So as our budget, eighty approximately eighty percent of it is salary and benefits of our budget. Like I said, we we de-allocated two positions. We currently have, going into the next fiscal year, have five staff members that have agreed to voluntary furloughs. Last year, we had, I think, seven or eight. Probably, I mean, it's not a huge savings, but it was probably in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand in salary in salaries that it saved. So when you're in a time of the budget crunch, every dollar helps. We are requesting an additional sixty-two thousand dollars from the general fund. Without that funding, that we just don't have the money to pay for the license for Just Appraised, and that is going to create a backlog. Right now, we're about five months, and as we're we just started using Just Appraised about a month or two ago, worked out some of the issues we had, and we're now as training as well is getting it up to speed. That has really increased our productivity with processing all those. Without that program, we will only have two people running it because the third person we didn't replace. That five months will probably go to a year and a half easily. That's going to not only affect the backlog in our office, it's going to affect the the auditor's office, because we'll need to do additional role corrections to when we do end up getting those processes done. And and as well as the treasure tax collector, they'll be sending multiple bills versus one. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Bring it back to the board. Anybody? Man, you're good.
So I do have on the AI.
Yes.
Since it's kind of in a tempest, see, I guess it's, you know, or mid-teens or whatever you want to call it. How much do you see? I mean, I'm reading stuff this weekend that says it's going to actually take it could actually replace eighty-five percent of all jobs within the next fifteen years, and that kind of shocks the hell out of me.
Yeah.
But you see, I know you got Just Appraised.
Yes.
And that's fairly new. Is the other AI, the what was the other program you brought on?
Oh, the direct direct enrollment.
Yeah, direct enrollment.
It's not necessarily that's not an AI. That's actually part of the 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 property tax database. So what what happens is you take let's use McKinleyville as an example. We'll figure out, you know, three-bedroom, two-bath house, typical built during the timeframe.
In Hartwood.
You know, it was, you know, four hundred thousand is is an example. And then we'll then we manually will put in adjustments. So for every, you know, five hundred square feet, you reduce it or increase it depending on, you know, by a thousand dollars. And so what it does, if it takes a it takes that transfer, and it goes through that, and it takes all the adjustments that we manually put in there, and we have to go through there yearly to update those. And then it looks at, okay, it's a four hundred thousand, I'll make the adjustment. Okay, this appraisal is, you know, four fifty, you know, based on the adjustments that we do in there. So it's not really AI. It's taking the data that we put in there, but it's it's kind of automatically doing the appraisal for us. And then we would all we do is we would go in and verify, is there, you know, is this normal? Is there something, you know, askew here that we need to adjust? And and then if we just hit click, okay, and then it rolls that value.
Okay.
Where the AI is actually reading the documents for us and and literally putting into the.
And interpreting and and coming up with what you would normally come up with in two hours and doing it and.
Yeah, so if you take it so a typical transfer, say, it takes you a half an hour to do it, this is doing it in like three minutes.
Yeah.
And then what we're just verifying that the data that's going in is correct, and maybe there's no errors or anything.
A lot of people are looking forward to the day that there's five computer screens sitting up here, and that's it. So, all right, thanks, Howard.
All right. Any other questions?
So Supervisor Joe.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate that there are limits to how far one can can contract before, you know, costs increase in other ways, just because simply the work's not getting done.
Right.
Certainly, a lot of difficult decisions on the part of this board to try and figure all this stuff out and balance everything. Going to AI or other things with appraisal values and stuff like that, I assume there still be an appeal process for appraisal values.
Yes.
Especially for AOBs where it's less than the, what is it today, two hundred or three hundred dollars a square foot assessment value for.
Right.
New construction, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
People choose to build on their own, they clearly can do it a lot cheaper. So that that process would still exist, yeah.
That is correct.
I mean, it reduces our revenue, I recognize that, but we have to be fair to those homeowners that are doing that process, so.
Yes, yeah, none of the the appeal process is still the same. None of that will change if, you know, they if there's a valuation that a taxpayer disagrees with, you know, there's that that process is still in place. That doesn't get that's not removed.
Great. I don't need to do it here, but I want to give you a call about the water storage tax exemptions and understand that process a little bit better.
Sure.
We'll do that offline.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
Supervisor Royal.
It's not a question, but it is a comment about appreciation for the, you know, the way that you've integrated new tools and the mailing machine and all of that. I really think, you know, that's that's good to see that we're, you know, improving efficiencies where we can, and I just want to recognize that.
All right, thank you.
Saving all the tongues up there. Thank you. Come on up, fly guy. Kathy, did you wear black for a reason? I just. It's the tone of the budget.
She's a Johnny Cash fan. Nikki, did you get our presentation? Awesome. All right. Cody Bruggets, Director of Aviation for the County of Humboldt, thank you for having us here today. Chair Bone and the rest of the supervisors, as well as CAO Hayes, have Kathy Canapah, our Senior Admin Analyst, with me. I guess the lady in black has Rex identified. This photo introducing this or introducing our team, this was taken last August twenty-fifth, shortly before we reopened the ACV airport after having Mercer Frasier, a local entity, repave that with a very large contract, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward in the presentation.
Our presentation will go through three main areas within our department. We'll go through air service development and look at some passenger statistics and market industry outlook. We'll talk a little bit about staffing and staffing allocation that your board approved back in January of twenty twenty-two. We'll go through our capital improvements for the last three fiscal years and then the outlook moving forward, and then we'll kind of highlight our takeaways. So we'll try to do a little historical outlook where we sit currently and then what that looks like in this upcoming budget year.
This here shows our air service development statistics or our passenger statistics over the last five years. You could see we were increasing prior to COVID. That hundred and seventy-two thousand was just shy of previous records. Hundred and eighty-nine thousand almost got us directly in line with previous passenger records as we climbed out of COVID in twenty twenty-one. And then twenty twenty-two was a new record for us, higher than previous records by almost ten percent. And then we dropped slightly last year, but still right in line with those previous records. This year, through the first quarter, our passenger statistics are back in line with twenty twenty-two, and if we keep up where we've gone with the first quarter of calendar year twenty twenty-four, we will actually eclipse that record from twenty twenty-two. This shows those same same statistics along the bottom. Looks a little less dramatic just because of the scale of our parking revenue. I wanted to highlight this as more passengers leads to more parking lot revenue, which is actually our biggest revenue generator for our entire department, and it is for most airports of of all sizes. So you can see as we invest in that air service and we try to attract more airlines, what that impact is to our bottom line. The staffing allocation that Kathy brought up in the overview, your board approved back in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, essentially for us to increase our personnel that perform maintenance at airports. And when I say maintenance, this is a variety of things from helping with plumbing and electrical items or painting in the terminal up into on the airfield, mowing, electrical, keeping the lights and signage on on the airfield, keeping the lights on in the parking lot, painting on the airfield and and around our properties, and just a multitude of other tasks. That staff that you increased fifty percent there really allowed us to get away from ACV. I know Supervisor Madrone, ACV sits in the heart of your district, but of course, the rest of you have airports in your districts as well, and us getting out to those airports, even for the basics of mowing and keeping those properties maintained the way they should have, you can see the significant increase in time that we were able to allocate to those different airports. On the capital improvement front, I'll just say that it's been a real wild ride here for the last few years, inclusive of that photo we showed on the introduction and repaving the main runway there at at ACV. These projects that you see highlighted with a zero-dollar local share, those were funded through the CARES Act allocation, which was right in line with eighteen million dollars overall. We use that for a multitude of purposes, for projects, investing in staff as we covered, and investing in equipment to help us properly maintain our airports. These projects where you see the local share, that local share is ten percent of the project cost, specifically nine point three four percent. Don't ask me how the FAA comes up with those funding mechanisms or ratios, but the projects themselves, we get ninety point six six percent funded when we get granted those funds through the FAA's Airport Improvement Program. These projects that we're talking about and these dollar values that you see on the screen, when we compare ourselves to the rest of the Northern California region outside of the Sacramento International Airport or the Santa Rosa Airport, the Snoopy Airport down south, we have garnered more funding and accomplished more for Humboldt County's airports than anybody else in Northern California. And that's kudos to Kathy in helping track all these millions of dollars and helping us obtain those. That's kudos to the board for supporting us and the CAO for supporting us in our pursuit as we try to improve all of our county airports. This is what we're proposing for next year. It is still significant, but certainly what you can see here is a transition to those general aviation airports throughout the county. There's some work that's still going to take place at ACV, but the majority of the work will be happening as far as rehabilitation efforts at Garberville's Airport, on the runway rehabilitation efforts at the Murray Field Airport. But we're really transitioning. We do have some large projects at ACV, but transitioning our focus to those outlying airports. This here shows those fiscal years combined, and this is what I was getting to with what we've accomplished with those projects. And this is an investment for the entire community, whether it's the general aviation users that have their own aircraft or the folks that utilize our airline services, and you can see those increased numbers on what we showed earlier as well. Takeaways, really, we wanted to highlight here today our investment in staffing, supported by the board, and what we've accomplished with that. When I first got here in twenty eighteen, I don't know that the grass had been mowed at the any of the outlying airports in the previous few years, because some of it was taller than I am, and I'm shrinking in my old age, so. But we we've accomplished a lot from those basics to the larger projects and really just investing now to prevent higher costs in the future when we're looking at some of the rehabilitation efforts that we're planning for this year. Those federal funds that we have received, again, we're we're doing the best we can and really outcompeting the rest of the region in California or Northern California. And when we're competing for those funds at the quote-unquote local level, we are competing against the Reddings, the Crescent Cities, and and the other communities in our region, but we're also competing against San Francisco International when we get into the bigger pool of funding and San Jose International and LAX. It's all one pool at the end of the day, and we've been very successful because we've shown the FAA that we're doing things the right way here with our airports, but also executing when those funds are allocated to us and delivering projects to improve safety. And just lastly, throughout that time window, we have not had general fund requests, so those local shares, we've been able to utilize other funding within our department to cover the the local share for those projects and for that staffing. So with that, any questions?
Supervisor Wilson.
And so do I understand, like, from an operational perspective, your biggest chunk of revenue is parking, but that's at one airport?
Right.
We have all these other airports. So revenue generation from those, is that a thing?
It it is definitely a thing. I did not highlight it this morning because it's a fraction. Approximately all of our hangar rent, which is another large revenue line item, equates to about twenty-five percent of our parking lot revenue. So our parking lot, far and away, is our top revenue generator. Hangar rent is another large item, but comparatively much smaller. Rental car revenue is another large one, and then taxes or not taxes, excuse me, fees that we charge to the airlines, whether that's for rent, landing fees, fuel flowage fees, things of that nature. So the vast majority of our overall revenue does come from ACV.
So the revenue from ACV supports and subsidizes these other airport operations?
You could definitely, yeah, label it that way or identify it that way for sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can I get an update on the fuel tank?
It's done.
Is it up and running?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With the card lock?
You didn't read your email I sent you.
No, probably not. I deleted them.
That's what he reminds me when he calls me. I sent you an email. I don't read your emails. But no, it's it's been up and running for approximately a month and a half, two months now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I know there were some glitches at first, so I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And and then Supervisor Wilson? Oh. Again, I don't read them. And then what? And then, explain the apron. Are you talking about where the planes? The, okay.
Yeah, so what we're doing or plan to do this year, and again, we work really closely with the FAA just to set these up. But we're planning to design taxiway Alpha reconstruction in a new location. So up at ACV, and I'll just say the caveat for you guys and all of the public, we don't anticipate any impacts like we had in repaving the runway last year, i.e., we're not going to have to close the airport or close off airline service for a 12-day window or anything like that. But we do need to relocate our primary parallel taxiway at ACV. The way it's configured today, it's 100 feet too close to the main runway. So years ago, the FAA changed their engineering standards, so our airfield configuration with that taxiway no longer is in line with those engineering standards that the FAA has updated. Additionally, the apron part that you're asking about is rehabilitation efforts of our terminal apron, so where the airliners park. Again, we'll do that in a way that does not conflict with the current airline operations, i.e., we'll only close portions of that at a time and do reconstruction efforts in certain areas so that they can continue to come and go. But those are not projects that we plan in this fiscal year to actually be doing construction. What you saw in the presentation is the start of that effort in designing both of those projects.
Great. And I thank you for everything you've done the last four and five years. I really do appreciate, and Kathy, I appreciate everything when you stepped in and brought everything you brought forward. I've known Kathy since she was basically born. She was my neighbor, so. You weren't, so.
That's why he reads your emails.
Yeah, I read Kathy's. And I think he had most of us at no request from the general fund, so thank you very much.
Thank you all for the support.
Supervisor Wilson?
So, I mean, I really, as you know, we've been talking about these things a lot, and I do very much appreciate sort of the turnaround. And also, you know, I want to appreciate the board's decision to really separate out the airport in this way from a fiscal perspective. It was, I think it was wise decision-making process, and it's been very helpful. But I guess, if, you know, that you're not asking for general fund today or in this moment, but in the future, things can change. And so, do you feel like you have a way to, are you to accumulate future funds to, in terms of sort of rainy day, separate from this? And what I'm really getting at is, are we really looking at sort of operations across all of our airports as to whether or not they're used versus their cost analysis and that ratio? Because I do know that we have more airports per capita than just about any county in California. And so while things feel good in this moment, they can turn. And so how are we prepping to become more resilient as we move forward?
Yeah, great question. I'd like to just go back a minute and also thank this board as well as some of your predecessors. That turnaround wasn't me, that was us. And not only did we split the airports out, but many of you worked with us to help us do things the right way in changing our business practices. And those efforts continue today. We still have, you know, some increases that we've done over the past few years that need to continue for the next couple of years as far as hangar rents and other matters. So I'm sure you'll be seeing emails or outreach from some of our users as we continue that process. But really what we were highlighting there, as far as the capital investment that the FAA is making in our airports, they're doing that because they know we're doing the right thing and changing those business practices. And we continue to do that to make sure that we're in compliance with all of their regulations. As far as strategies moving forward and rainy days and funding for operations, we continue to analyze all kinds of options for the future, whether that is reduce staffing, you know, at this time next year, or reducing services, or possibly reducing, you know, what we do at each airport or our facilities overall. It's a constant evaluation. And yeah, admittedly, we will likely have some difficult conversations throughout this coming fiscal year as we plan for fiscal year '25, '26 with all of you. So we're putting that information and data together, and I'll be discussing that with you guys over the next 10 to 12 months.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Supervisor Madron?
Thanks, Director Rogatz. I am very impressed by the work you, Kathy, and the whole team up there have been doing for years now. And yeah, it is a team effort. I get that. But the turnaround is just, you know, really phenomenal in terms of all the activities, the improvement of assets, all these things, the microgrids, I mean, just so many things are happening, and an air show that we'll talk about tomorrow. But, you know, I also appreciate you coming to our two-by-twos that we do with MCSD and with McMac. And I wanted to suggest that I think it'd be great for you to set up a presentation to McMac with our Chair Lisa Dugan. I think that'd be great for the community, but you've done a great job of trying to keep McKendyville informed about what's going on in the airport as well as the whole county. And you truly are not a fly-by-night organization. Although your recent trip sounded like it. Quite an experience. But anyway, thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, thanks. And I think one of the reasons we have so many airports is because we have such a large county. I mean, Trinity, I think Trinity County has four, I believe.
Yeah, I think three, maybe four.
For 20,000 people. But again, they're a very large, so the per capita thing, I think it comes down to the safety factor and the amount of money that is spent on some of them. But it's when you take a look at how much they're used in emergency situations, fires and everything else, they're strategically placed. A lot of things we have aren't moneymakers. A lot of them are just to provide services through the county and safety standards. So, I mean, I can understand both ways, but I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Thank you, guys.
And with that, if I'm not mistaken, CAO Hayes, we're going to go till, come back here at 1 o'clock? Or wait, do we have one more? I'm sorry, oh, wait.
We forget.
I understand, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Up next, we have Director of Child Support Services, and Bennett Hoffman is here to present.
I'm Bennett Hoffman, the Director of Child Support Services, and with me today is Stacy Casta, the Assistant Director. I can get it. There we go. All right, I'm going to start with some background and history of the child support program. It's a federally required program. In California, the program is overseen by the State Department of Child Support Services, and it's administered by the counties at the local level. We are one of eight regions in the state, and what that means is we have decided to be a regional department. We operate child support programs for both Humboldt and Trinity Counties. There's eight different regions that do that. 19 counties are considered regional counties where they have combined services like we have, and they operate in more than one county. Humboldt County is the lead county, and regionalization started in 2015, and this agreement was renewed for a five-year period by your board in 2021. Funding. We are federally funded and state-funded. The federal government picks up 66% of the funding for the child support program, and the state picks up the rest. So the funding methodology at its high level is pretty simple. The State Department of Child Support Services determines how much child support money each region or each county gets, and it's based on a formula for case, as they look at caseload size, they look at the average FTE cost, and then they also give us 20.9% of that amount for overhead and operating expenses. Just a little background on the core things that our department does. We establish and maintain court orders for child support, and we try to work with both parents so we can provide support required by the court orders. We ensure parentage by doing paternity tests and obtaining parentage orders. We maintain the payment records for child support, and then we facilitate access to private health insurance. We really like to think of child support as an anti-poverty program. It helps lift or keep families out of poverty by collecting and distributing child support payments. We're down a little bit this year, but we're still over $10 million collected and distributed to families in Humboldt and Trinity County. And this year, we collected 64.5% of current support owed. We'd always like to get better at that, but we actually increased a percentage this year. We were at 63.4% last year, and we are above the state average, which is 63.1%. I always like to put this in just to talk about historically where we've been with our budget for the last few years. We took a pretty significant funding reduction in 2021 that wasn't expected. 14% of our budget was cut. That has never been restored. I'll talk a little bit more in the future about why we don't think it's ever going to come back. The funding has remained since that year. We've gotten the same amount every year, and we expect it to remain flat or be reduced in the future. We've had significant staffing challenges this year. It's been a rough year for staffing. The last few years have, but this year hit us really hard. We had a lot of retirements. We lost a lot of institutional knowledge. And so we had vacancy rates on average of about 35% this year. It was closer to 60% in our case management area, which is, of course, critical to the work that we do. The good news I have is that over the last three to six months, we've had tremendous success recruiting and hiring staff. We have hired seven new people in the last three months. I don't know exactly why. I can tell you what we did differently. We did a lot of advertising. We created brochures for every position to try to get the word out there, to try to really explain what we do as a department and why people should come work for us. The other thing that I really think helped is we do offer a lot of flexible work options, and we offer teleworking. Our business is suited in a way that we can do that, and so we really pushed that when we were doing recruiting. And every one of the candidates that we hired recently has told us that that was one of the factors that brought them to our department. Trinity Office has been a real challenge for us this year, too, for staffing. And this is new to us because as long as I've been here, that office has kind of taken care of itself. We oversee it, but we had experienced staff members. We had three people in that office that took care of everything. We're down to one full-time person in that office, and she's on leave right now. So we really had to scramble. We have to travel there to, we were rotating right now, we're rotating staff, including myself, to travel to that office to keep it running while she's not there. And I'm really working hard, we are working hard, to try to recruit people for that office. We just can't get anybody that wants to go work in that office or in that community. We've had a hard time hiring someone. So we're really going to try to ramp that up this year because we need to get more people in that office. Traveling back and forth is not efficient, of course. And the other challenge that we have this year is our main office location in Eureka. I mean, this has been for several years. It has more space than we need. We have a temporary fix for that where we are subletting some of the space to economic development. I think at some point, they're going to move out of that space. We were going to remodel the building. We decided not to do that just because of the cost. So we're looking to get out of that space because the rent is just too high for us. The good news on that, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but as long as I'm talking about it, we found a space that we really like, which would reduce our rent by 50% in Eureka. So we'd go from $40,000 a month, I believe, to $16,000 a month. So we're working with ADA right now to see if the landlord is willing to make the accommodations needed to get us into that space as soon as possible. So the accomplishments this year, even though we spent most of the year hiring, training, and just keeping the lights on, we did accomplish quite a few things that we're proud of. We're always looking for ways to become more efficient, especially with the complications we have with having to report everything we do to the state, do a budget reporting to the state, fiscal reporting to the state, but we also do fiscal reporting at both county levels. So we did a pilot program with the state child support to redesign a fiscal reporting process that they require us to do. So we brought them in so they could really see the things that we have to do at the county level from a budget standpoint. And there's a lot of duplicative things that we do with the state, and then we have to do with the county as well. So they've been working on us to make things easier for us, essentially. And what they're going to do is they're going to take over a lot of the work that they had been putting on us, or they're going to redesign that the way we are doing it. And it's really going to free up time for our fiscal staff in the future. And this is a pilot that they're trying with us, and if it's successful, they're going to roll it out to other child support programs. The other thing that we did, and this is around the theme of trying to retain staff in the future, is we added an additional level to the flex class of the child support assistant. Now they can flexibly promote between the one, two, and three levels. The next thing, although this was mostly a product of the fact that we just weren't able to hire staff this year, we actually spent, we have over $1 million in savings for our budget year this year. We are going to return $1,819,000 of that money to the state for this current fiscal year. We have to do that by March 1st so that they can allocate the money elsewhere. So we projected out that we're going to save at least $1 million. We're going to be safe and hold some of that back for some other projects I'm going to talk about, but we're going to give $819,000 back. I really give, even though that savings, a lot of it was not wanted because we would rather have the staff to help us, I really give credit to Stacy and our fiscal team. They're always really good about making sure we stay under budget and we're careful with the amount that we spend. So that, the fact that we came in $1 million under this year is a credit to that team. And then the other thing that we're proud of is that every year, the federal government requires the state to come in and audit our cases to make sure that we're doing our case work correctly. And this year, we had 100% compliance on the federal self-assessment, which they do every year. So we're proud of that accomplishment. So looking forward, some of the things that we want to work on, we're going to continue to enhance our community outreach activities. We've been doing a lot of advertising, and it seems like it's paying off. We have people coming into our office that didn't realize we were out there and they could use our services, and they're applying for our services now. So we're going to really So we're going to really work on beefing up the advertising portion of our outreach. I had this on last year. I still have it on the radar as we would really like to provide more in-person services to remote areas of the county. We just weren't able to to execute on that this year because of our staffing challenges and the challenges with the Trinity office. But we've looked at some property. We looked at an office in Redway right next to DHHS's office down there, which I'd love to be in there at least part-time to provide those services to the county. The state has asked us to do a little bit of a cost-benefit analysis and do more research around the population down there and how many of our customers actually live in that area before they commit to helping us do that move, but it's something that I still want to pursue. One of the things that you might not know is we we get a lot of people that pay in cash. And so we have kiosks in Trinity and in our Eureka office where people can come in and make payments with cash. That's one of the challenges with having an office in Southern Humboldt is I know people are going to want to come in and make cash payments. We have to figure that piece out, and the state would have to put a kiosk in there, and I'm not sure they'll pay for it unless we can show them justification for having one down there. And the last thing, well, there's two things. I mentioned the building. I already talked about that. We're going to try to move our office to reduce rent costs. And then we also want to convert our child support specialist class, which right now is a one, two, to a one, two, three deep class. Finally, this is what our budget looks like for '24, '25. As I mentioned, we're going to get the same allocation in Humboldt County as we've gotten for the last few years, 4.4 million. One of the things I wanted to mention about the way they calculate our child support allocation, we're actually considered an overfunded county in Humboldt County. Seven years ago or so, when they came up with this new methodology, they decided they were going to calculate how much each county should get, but they weren't going to penalize those that were already over that amount. So if you did the calculation for Humboldt County, we should actually only get 3.9 million for our allocation, but they still give us that extra amount. So we know.
Right.
So we know that eventually that number is going to go down, so we have to be fiscally responsible. The other reason we know that the program overall isn't going to be putting any new money into it anytime soon is there's a measure that the the federal government uses for child support programs called the cost-effectiveness ratio. And essentially, what they do is they look at how much you collect, they look at how much you spend, and they want you to be spending much less than you're collecting for families. What they would really like you to do, they'd like you to be at about the $3 level, so for every dollar you spend, you're collecting $3. In California, for every dollar we spend, we're at $2.30. And once we get under $2 and we're trending down, the federal government will start taking incentive money away from us. So that's why we know that the state is really going to be watching the amount the program spends over the next few years. We don't expect any new money. The governor's budget doesn't call for any new money for the child support program this year, but thankfully, at least to this point, they haven't cut any money, and we don't expect there to be money in the future. I think that's the last slide. Any questions?
Bring it back to the board. Does it go to Bush now?
I just have a question around the Trinity position. Have you advertised over there, and are there certain qualifications, I'm assuming?
There are certain qualifications. We have advertised there. I think we've had the same challenges there that that a lot of places are facing, especially rural communities, is finding people that are qualified for the position that want to work there. We're going to keep trying because we need people in that area, but it's it's been a challenge. One of the things that we that might be the reason is people it is a Humboldt County position. There are no more Trinity County positions in our department, and and so maybe people are seeing that, and they're not understanding that that's in the Trinity office. So we're really going to this year try to do a better job of communicating that and just push pushing all our efforts towards recruiting in that area. We've never had to do that before because we've always had a stream of people, but we had some unexpected early retirements, and one person left to go to Delnor County.
Okay. I think I'll email you to get the qualifications. I just know I know a lot of people up there, so.
Great.
I'll just email you for that. Thank you.
Supervisor Rowe?
Well, that question sparked a question in my mind about the you mentioned that the workplace is flexible and people can be working remotely, and I know you shared that with us when we met as well. Are the hours pretty flexible as well, or is there ability to potentially even consider part-time positions? I'm wondering if there's like, how flexible can you be in this?
We actually have quite a bit of flexibility. Because of the nature of our work, there there really needs to be minimal staff covering the front counter, and then a lot of our work is done behind the scenes. And so we can off right now, we're offering people to come in as early as like 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning and do work and stay as late as 6:30, 7 o'clock in the evening as long as we like make sure that there are enough people to cover everything. We've been doing that for years now, and it's worked out really well for our staff. We have one person that does like a staggered schedule where they come in really early in the morning. They have to take a couple of hours off in the in the middle of the afternoon and come back in later. It works best for their family, and we've been really proud of the fact that we can work with people and make those things happen. With the with the remote work, again, it's it's just been we've just been able to be as flexible as possible, and people seem to really appreciate it. I think our work productivity has gone up quite a bit because if someone's home with a child that is sick and they're not sick, a lot of times, they'll say, can I still work from home? I want we all to put in as many hours today because I do have a sick child, but I can still keep working. And people are choosing to do those things because they don't have to use as much benefit time. So the flexibility has been really wonderful.
Supervisor John?
Were you finished? Sorry. Thank you, Chair. Well, I applaud you on your efforts on flexibility. I mean, I think your department in particular shows the benefit of absorbing such a policy and really putting it to action. And as you just said, increase in productivity. You know, it's really a good thing to hear. Earlier in the beginning of all this this morning, there was the Supervisor Royal, as part of the ad hoc, mentioned the idea that long-term savings can come from us ultimately having our own buildings rather than leasing or renting. And we know that takes time, but I'm very excited about the possibility that if you guys move to something cheaper, it's still a lease, but it's cheaper based on the staffing you need or the space you need for staff to come into the office, maybe there's room for planning and building to finally move. Because, you know, we've been talking a lot about Semper Virens and DHHS facilities and how we can take advantage of this massive amount of money out there for new construction, for shovel-ready projects. Well, to get to that place, to really start taking advantage of these whole blocks we own, like the one across the street, the one up at Planning and Building and Semper Virens, we've got to first move planning and building. And I know that's not for today's discussion, per se, but I'm excited about that possibility of you guys not only reducing your costs, but what that might or might not mean in terms of possible relocations and starting that ball rolling on us ultimately creating the one-stop shop and other things on our own properties. So it takes little steps like this to get there, but again, I applaud you on all your efforts in your department to, you know, become more efficient and give people flexibility so they have quality of life themselves as well. So congratulations on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else? Thanks. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bowen. Members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford and Karen Minell, to present the budget for the Planning and Building Department. And this year, there is a big issue on the horizon, and that is being labeled in our budget presentation as budget austerity. Last year, we presented the board with an undesirable alternative of either allocating additional money to the Planning and Building Department or laying off staff. This year, we did not want to be in that position again, and we are not. We're not asking for any additional money. But there have been some organizational changes and things that we've done to get there, and we'll present that today. Just want to start by saying the Planning and Building Department is composed of four different budget units. They're pretty self-explanatory. The Building Inspection Unit, Code Enforcement Inspection Unit. Current Planning is the parent budget unit that kind of houses all of the administrative work, and then Advanced Planning, which is includes both long-range planning and the Housing and Grants Program. So this morning, we want to briefly, as briefly as possible, go through the organizational changes that have been made to get to the point that we're currently at, to discuss some of the trends that affect our projected revenue, to look at the budget outlook for each of the different budget units, and to give a brief presentation on the implications for the next year. In terms of the overall department, the organizational changes, when we went into this year, we had 72 positions that were to be filled and allocated. Through attrition and retirement, we've seen nine positions vacated. We have not refilled those and not are proposing not to retain those as part of this budget. We had seven positions become vacant due to the voluntary separation incentive program. Those positions cannot be refilled. They are being retained but not funded because they can't be refilled. So the budget says that there are 63 positions, seven of them are the VSIP, 56 will be filled or are currently filled. This constitutes a 22% reduction in staff from the beginning of '23, '24. If you go back to the beginning of '22, '23, it's a 33% reduction in the staffing rates. Some of the trends that we're concerned about in terms of projecting revenues is that our building permit revenue is overall in a downward trend. Our planning permit revenue is holding fairly steady, but unfortunately, the planning permits typically follow behind the building permit trends. Our actual revenue is affected by factors that are external to us related to development, interest rates, the market, the cannabis market, and so we're taking a very conservative approach in terms of developing what our our revenues may be. So this department's total budget shows that there will be revenues of approximately $12 million. The overall expenditures for the department are $17.7 million. That's a little bit inflated because within that, there's $8.2 million in grants, both in terms of revenue and expenses. And so that's money that we'll pass through. This includes a general fund contribution of about $5.6 million. So moving into Budget Unit 262, which is the Building Department, the just for this is for 2023, which gives us a full year of metrics, is they did 2,189 building inspections. They did 878 plan checks. They issued 2,035 permits and issued or investigated 247 stop-work orders and substandard housing In terms of the building metrics over the last four years, you can see that new single-family residential construction is or the number of permits being pulled is overall on a downward trend. The number ADUs overall would be on an upward trend, but is significantly down from 2022. The place that we are seeing an increase is in residential additions and alterations. New commercial permits is nearly or is approximately half, and commercial remodels are substantially down. The number down at the bottom for photovoltaic systems, that has been increasing, and with the state law requiring that that be in be done basically over the counter, and we've developed a new solar app permitting system to allow that to occur, those numbers are greatly increasing as well. The the big takeaway from that, though, that I did want to point out is that in the single-family residential permits going down, commercial permits going down, those are where a lot of the building departments or building units revenue comes from. And so those go down, and the the revenue goes down significantly with that. In terms of the accomplishments for the building unit this last year, developed a most of the applications now are all the applications are being accepted electronically. And one of the things that's allowed us to do is to develop a pre-application process where people can submit their for their building permit. We review it, give them comments back before they submit. As I mentioned just a moment ago, we launched the Solar App Plus program. There's instant online building permits available 24/7 now. Some of the people really like that. Heard of some contractors actually applying for their building permit from the job site and getting it immediately. And then we've also updated the webpage. In terms of the goals for this next year, we're looking to complete the substandard housing within 90 days, and just to consolidate the work on that, that's that can be a fairly substantial amount of work. And then we also want to close down the counter for periods of time with most things going to electronic submittal. It doesn't take the same amount of staff time at the counter, and we'd like to reprioritize that time to permit processing to reduce the overall amount of time that is spent in processing permits. And then we're also always looking for ways to increase the number of permits that can be issued directly over the counter, where there is either a senior inspector or one of the plan checkers available at the counter to do plan checks to issue permits as quickly as possible. The budget for the 262 unit shows a projected revenue of just under $1.5 million. The projected expenditures are approximately $2.4 million. The general fund contribution is $960,000. You'll see with personnel, there are 14 filled positions. There's one VSIP, so there's a total of 15 positions on the books. This includes moving one full-time equivalent from 277. This was a permit technician, which is more appropriately located within the building unit, and we've also de-allocated a senior building inspector. This brings us then to code enforcement. Some of the activities and accomplishments for code enforcement this last year is they've issued 177 notices to obey, 92 notices of violation. They've closed 549 cases in 2023. We've had three administrative hearings with decisions that are in the county's favor. We've reduced the backlog that existed 450 in 2020 down to 99 at the end of 2023. So we're basically doing away with the backlog. We also abated seven nuisance properties. The goals for this coming year is to continue to work with other departments and agencies to develop a task force to better address problem properties. We're looking to streamline the enforcement process for properties where there are revoked permits or withdrawn cannabis applications where the property owner is not following up to clean the property up. We're also merging the two We're also merging the two teams together that were originally basically the cannabis team and the traditional team. And this will give us a better efficiency. And people are now being assigned geographically to develop just a better knowledge of the area, have better relationships within those areas, and to be more efficient. So from a budgeting standpoint, you can see that the code enforcement unit is largely general fund-funded. The projected expenditures is $1 million, $1.7 million. And the general fund contribution for this is $1.6 million. This does not include the amount of money that's normally allocated for abatements. That $500,000 is not included within this. Do want to point out that in terms of personnel, we're going from 13 allocated positions at the beginning of '22, '23, '24 to eight filled positions this year. So there is a substantial reduction in staff associated with code enforcement. Moves us into 277, which is the parent budget unit. And this last year, also is where current planning operates and received 321 applications in 2023, took 294 applications to decision, did 1,048 compliance inspections, 1,043 of those were done actually on-site. Some of the other accomplishments for 277 included the 56-unit multifamily development in McKinleyville. We've done 56 onsite surface mining inspections. We've worked with the 5th District to develop the design review committee. And we've also, it says streamlined the permit process for short-term rentals, but that should really say, we developed an entirely new application permitting process for short-term rentals that's currently being implemented. So the goals for the next year is to really resolve all the non-compliant permits, all the permits that are either not in compliance with their conditions of approval, are behind in payments, have not paid taxes, is to move those through to an appropriate resolution. That could involve both the suspension and/or revocation process. Absolutely want to reduce the process turnaround time for applications and assign timeframes based upon the complexity of the project. Residential projects are a priority for development, and really want to continue to invest in staff to develop a staff with better rounded and better understanding of not only process, but the legal requirements that they're called upon to implement. The budget for 277 shows a projected revenues of $1.9 million and projected expenditures of $4.2 million with a general fund contribution of $2.2 million. This budget unit is reducing from 38 allocated positions at the beginning of '23, '24 to 29 filled positions this year. Three of those will be VSIP positions, five will be de-allocated altogether. Moves us to advanced planning or long-range planning. Some of the accomplishments is the short-term rental ordinance. Working on, we're approaching completion by the end of this year. We will have a draft of the climate action plan, ready to begin the public review process, actually ready to begin the EIR process. We've seen the signed ordinance adopted and then also updated the general plan safety element. The goals for this year is to complete the work on the McKinleyville Town Center, complete the work on the climate action plan. We're in the process of updating the Bay Area, Humboldt Bay Area Plan. We've got a grant to do some exploratory analysis of King Salmon and Fields Landing. Want to finish the tiny home village ordinance and continue to obtain grants to see housing built. So as I mentioned before, the budget for this is a little bit different than in the other budget units because it does have about $8.2 million allocated or from grants. So that kind of skews what is apparently going on here. But I do want to say that our, the typical planning portion of this, that $320,440 there is, comes from what's called the general plan user fee. The general plan user fee is a percentage of the permit fees that we receive either for building or for planning-related permits. As that revenue goes down, the general plan user fee also drops, which limits the staff that we can deploy to work on long-range planning items. This budget unit then currently will support a total of five people. It will support a planning manager, it will support two planners, program coordinator in housing, and administrative analyst in housing. One of the positions that were here is being VSIPed, and then another position is being de-allocated altogether. At the beginning of this last year, we anticipated having four staff and a manager in this unit for the long-range planning. We have already moved out to planners for budget reasons. So because of this, there are some implications in terms of what we can really do in 2A2. This is the hardest-hit budget unit. It supports both the housing and grant work and the planning functions that we do relative to planning work. You can see there that three of the things that we're working on are grant-funded, which is extremely helpful. But some of the others that are not grant-funded still require a substantial amount of time. And so we will be limited to what we can accomplish in the coming year. The money that, in terms of general plan allocation or general fund allocation that was shown on the previous screen, also showed money to complete the EIR for the climate action plan and the EIR for the McKinleyville Town Center. One of the things that we're finding is even the grant-funded positions do not completely cover the loaded rate. Some of them are very limited in terms of what they will cover. So that needs to be compensated with general fund money. We're continuing to explore, pursuing grants. The struggle with grants is you've got to get a grant that's big enough that really pays for the work. Otherwise, it costs nearly as much as you get. We want to expand the number of grants we've got to support housing. One of the things I do just want to point out that by reducing staff so significantly, whereas in the past, we've had capacity to reassign people pretty freely to go and do things, that flexibility is greatly diminished. Currently, we've got four people that are basically working full-time right now just on addressing the cannabis Measure S and cannabis fee issues that we're addressing, and that has really redirected a lot of staff time. So moving forward, the thing that we really want to do is increase revenue. We've talked about the first thing that we're going to work on there, which is to continue to improve our billable hours. We're also going to look at code enforcement perspective of issuing more notices of violation. We can recoup more cost if we issue a notice of violation. If we don't issue the notice of violation, the code doesn't allow us to recoup that cost. We've not been doing that from a policy perspective because we wanted to engage with the property owner and give them incentive to engage with us. And when you put paper on there saying that we're now going to find you, it just creates a little bit more of an adversarial relationship. We're also monitoring the number of staff that we have that, not only from retirements, we've got two retirements that we're expecting this year. We'll evaluate those positions, and at the current time, the plan is not to refill those. And then there's the normal staff turnover that we will hold positions vacant, looking towards the future to make sure we're positioning ourselves to, for next fiscal year, so that we're in an appropriate financial situation. That's the end of this presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Supervisor Wilson?
You, in the, from the cannabis revenue expenditure zone, where are we neutral, net positive, negative? What's the outlook on that?
So since we sent out the suspension letters, we sent out the last batch, I believe, on Friday. The previous few weeks, before the last two weeks, we had taken about an extra $200,000. So that is having a response. We've got 140 people that have responded to the suspension letters right now. I don't know what kind of income that's resulting in, but as I was researching another case on Friday, our financial assistant showed me a check that came in from the bill collector that was in the amount of about $38,000. So we are seeing income from that work.
Okay. But I'm just saying overall, is general fund supporting that program or not?
Thank you for clarifying the question. We are, it is not. We are not working on cannabis applications unless we have a deposit on hand.
Okay. And then from a revenue perspective in these different streams, I guess, do you have any understanding of where we might sit in terms of like where other counties or other jurisdictions are in terms of the, what's being brought in relative to the, to the, to the value of those developments in terms of, in terms of fees? Like how are we, are we in the high end, the medium end, or the low end in sort of regionally?
The cost of our fees? My only real experience is with a county that has a far, far, far higher fee structure, like tenfold. So I'm sure it ranges across the board. For a very rural county, we're probably fairly appropriately set. It's really cost recovery. And so it's just, we only recoup the cost of what we expand.
And then the long-range planning, and then, you know, this impacts our, the list from the general plan in terms of implementation. And so are we adjusting our timelines for implementation of the general plan policies around new ordinances and those sorts of things?
Going to have to adjust the timelines to accommodate the budget realities that we have. And the other thing that I can't commit to because it hasn't happened, but as we're able, assuming we're able, if we're able, to get grant funding, we'll work on things that the grants are issued for. The grants are rarely ever just here, go work on something long-range planning-related. It'll be for specific topics. So if we get money to work on things, we'll assign staff to work on those things, but they'll be related to priorities within the county.
And then in some places, and we've done this in some cases in relation to ordinances where you do sort of a stopgap ordinance, and sometimes we pass them and sometimes we don't. As for instance, I'll just use an example, the lighting ordinance. I mean, in some places, it's just a half a page. If you look at like, say, the City of Arques lighting ordinance, it's just half a page. So is it possible in some of the, on those lists that we could do sort of truncated ordinances as a stopgap to sort of like just generally make sure that we're at least running some sort of standard? I mean, we did it with the landscaping, where we just took the minimum standard for the state and applied that. And I'm just kind of wondering if we might want to prioritize in that way.
We can clearly do that. Yes, we can clearly do that.
Those are the questions I have for you today in this context. Thanks.
Supervisor Madjo?
Thank you, John. Been quite a, quite a roller coaster over the last several years with programs and projects and all the rest of it. Given the state of our budget and stuff, I wanted to suggest that Supervisor Bone and yourself perhaps bring something to the board if necessary, or maybe you can do this on your own. We're paying out $26,000 a year to the California Cannabis Authority for a database we don't even use. And so I think it'd be appropriate to discuss that. That might be a place we could save some money, but it's not on the agenda today. If you had, right now, I'm assuming your rent is free, basically because you're in a county building, or do you pay rent?
We pay no rent.
Pay no rent because we're in a county building. So the move that I was talking about earlier, no matter where things go, there's always been talk about having to do some shuffling with planning and building in order to accomplish the rebuilds on that Wood Street block that we own. Probably thinking about plans for that, not in this budget, obviously, but somehow or another, it's going to cost some money in order to ultimately save money, right? And take advantage of grants to build things. And then we're back to paying no rent, but in the interim, it's going to cost us some money to make some of those shifts and moves. But we're going to have to try and figure out how all that works down the road, perhaps not in this budget session.
That's a, that's a twofold approach. One is to identify within the budget that there's going to be now a line item to pay rent. And then that becomes part of the loaded rate of a planner, a building inspector, permit technician, code enforcement personnel working on things.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, as you know, I very much appreciate yours and staff's work on the town center ordinance in McKinleyville. And we did put the money forward for the EIR. I think that's going to be an incredible asset to the committee that's going to ultimately, again, increase revenues through sales taxes and a revitalized economy in McKinleyville, thanks to Ann Pearson's vision and your hard work in particular, as well as some of your staff. But also when the zoning, when the general plan was finalized, of course, the next step is to implement the zoning, and that's some of the stuff that Supervisor Wilson was talking about. There's various little minutia in there with ordinance updates and things like that. But one of them is actually get the zoning done. And I believe we talked about applying all of the zoning all over the county based on the general plan update, except for a number of community plan areas that were to be updated. Of course, the town center in McKinleyville was one of those. And then next in line, I believe, was Glendale-Fieldbrook, and then Willow Creek. And of course, Glendale, both those communities have spent a lot of time trying to do preliminary work to get ready for that process. I didn't see any of that in your prioritization, of course, down-staffed, limited budgets. What's the plan for those updates at this point, I guess?
They're, they're going to have to be prioritized for a subsequent budget year, unless we somehow are able to obtain additional funding through grants to do that work. And we are working for that. That's part of our strategy for this year is to increase the amount of grant funding that we utilize to get long-range planning work done.
Yeah. Okay. So perhaps an update to those two communities in particular, and there may be others. I forget if Bayside was part of that or some other areas, but I know those are two areas in my district that people have been hoping and waiting and working towards those updates. Of course, they won't be included in any zoning updates until we get those done. But I recognize the difficulty with limited budgets and limited staff. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Madjo?
Thank you. Director Ford, I just have a question around what Supervisor Wilson said with current, currently not utilizing general fund for cultivation. What did you, what was the, but so passed, though, because we weren't seeing permits being paid, or, you know, you were, I think, $2 million negative? Can you talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah. So we did have an accounts receivable of $1.5 million. Most of that was related to cannabis. One of the things that we did too late is that we stopped because we recognized that these deposits weren't being replenished, is we told cannabis applicants in particular that we're not going to work on their application unless they refill that deposit. There's got to be money on deposit for us to build and work on it. So that, that change has been made. So we're not currently So we're not currently taking the risk of working on a cannabis application that would be, the expense of which would be borne by the general fund.
So, thank you for that. And I also want to recognize that during the budget process with the ad hoc that it looked a lot different this year than it did last year for you, and that you and your staff have worked really hard to not have an additional request. And I really thank you for that, also changing your protocol on how you do business and recognizing that there was such an outstanding debt throughout the permitting process. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and just wanted to kind of hit on that for Supervisor Wilson because I think that's where he was looking at. So, thanks.
Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to reference, and Supervisor Madron mentioned, you know, well, it seems like we're kind of having a bit of an ad hoc facilities planning session here a little bit. But that, you remaining in that building does not, it does have costs associated with it. We, we have been doing a lot, spending a lot on that building just to maintain livability in its current context. And it could be and should be torn down in, in, you know, in, in the near future if we had the funding to move or the, the, the way to move forward. I mean, I'm just saying, so it is not without cost to remain in that space. It is just getting older, funkier, and less able to actually service the, the facing public. So I just want to, and actually staff, too. It's just, it is, so, yeah. I'm hoping that through our facilities planning process that we can derive a path for sustainability for your department and others that are in these very dilapidated buildings. Thanks for your endurance in that space, and thank your staff, please.
Supervisor Madron?
What was it, 590 cases of code enforcement closed? Did I get that number right?
I think 539.
Oh, okay, five, only 539, okay. Well, I think it should not go without saying that I wanted to congratulate Karen Maynell, who sits behind you there, and her staff and you and your staff for the incredible work that they've done to bring that backlog forward. I mean, that did not happen without a lot of very dedicated efforts and trying to work with people, like you said, and not come down with a hammer right away, but really try to get people to move towards compliance and all that. So I just want to thank you, Karen, for that hard work and all your staff. That just, that's a yeoman's effort there, really. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bush, no?
So I'll add that Karen has a new position and that Dean Beck is the new code enforcement, and he is doing a great job, and Karen did a great job while she was there.
Supervisor Wilson?
I just, I just want to say that from a budgetary perspective, and I know, I, I will speak for board members, that a lot of the anxiety that we get from the public comes from code enforcement-aligned issues, whether it's enforced upon or the neighborhood that is asking for relief from certain situations. That anxiety level is quite high often, and we really feel it as well. And so it can be a very strong focal point within our communities, and I appreciate the advancements that we've made. And when we look at what it is in terms of our budget, it's actually a very small part of our budget relative to sort of community livability. And so I just wanted to recognize the good work that your staff has been doing on that relative to the budgetary elements of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Row?
Thank you. I know you've undertaken gargantuan rearrangement within your department, and, and, you know, you're the department who I think has taken the, had the most VSIP participants. And I, it does not go unnoticed that there has been incredibly substantial effort made to reorganize based on, I mean, even before we were having these greater reorganization or efficiency conversations, so I just wanted to lift that up and say it's, it's greatly appreciated, and I, I know it's not easy. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Eads, how long do you think yours is going to take?
Probably close to 30 minutes.
All right. Library? If you can do it in 15, I'll take you, and then we'll take a half-hour break. Oh, excuse me.
County Council's office is actually next on the, the agenda.
How long are you going to, but? Do you want to, are you presenting for yourself?
I am presenting for myself. If you would like to go...
No, it doesn't matter. I didn't know if you were presenting for yourself or not. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Good afternoon, Supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to come before your board today. My name is Scott Miles, and I currently serve as the interim county council. The county council's office provides legal advice and support to the Board of Supervisors in various departments, agencies, boards, commissions, and special districts of the county, which includes but is not limited to representing the Department of Health and Human Services and juvenile dependency cases, conservatorship trials, involuntary medication hearings, writ hearings, and other court proceedings. Assisting the code enforcement unit with the department with the abatement process, including without limitation drafting notices and warrants and preparing for and appearing at administrative hearings. Thank you. Assisting the Planning and Building Department with reviewing controversial projects, conducting legally sufficient environmental review, preparing for appeals, and developing appropriate findings. Assisting the Human Resources Department with various employment-related matters, including but not limited to obtaining workplace violence restraining orders for county staff. Assisting all county departments with various types of transactional work, including without limitation reviewing and revising professional services agreements, memorandums of understanding, requests for proposals, requests for qualifications, and other contracts and procurement-related documents. Evaluating departmental policies, procedures, and protocols, and reviewing and revising agenda items that come before the board. Evaluating the need for and advising the county administrative office, the Human Resources Department, the Sheriff's Office, and various other county departments regarding revisions to county policy in response to new legislation and litigation. Managing and coordinating litigation with county staff and outside counsel, including but not limited to identifying and preserving documents that are responsive to discovery and Public Records Act requests, and assisting with the preparation and administr, preparation of administrative records and pleadings. And finally, maintaining and updating the Humboldt County Code online in coordination with code publishing. The county council's office has had a number of notable accomplishments over the past fiscal year, which included without limitation assisting the Department of Health and Human Services and the Sheriff's Office in finding ways to obtain treatment for mentally ill defendants as quickly as possible, including but not limited to implementation of the county's assisted outpatient treatment program and collaboration with the Redwood Coast Regional Center to have defendants placed in appropriate treatment facilities. Assisting risk management and other county departments with the implementation of various risk reduction policies, procedures, and practices. Providing several trainings regarding the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, the Political Reform Act, new developments in the law, and coordination and management of complex juvenile dependency cases to reduce the risk of litigation against the county. And ensuring the county's participation in several national opioid litigation settlements that will lead to the receipt of approximately $16 million over a 15-year period. The county council's office has a total annual budget of $3,297,297, with $1,417,796 in revenues and other financing sources, and a general fund contribution of $1,782,501. Due to current budget constraints, the county council's office recently de-allocated one full-time deputy county council position and has left another deputy county council position vacant. As a result, the county council's office has not submitted an additional request for general fund appropriations for the upcoming fiscal year. With that, I will conclude my present, my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody? Supervisor Madron?
Just to thank you, Scott, for your work and continuing as our interim council and working with limited staff, appreciate all the hard work going on there.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron.
There is an advantage to going just before lunch, Scott. Okay, with that, I apologize to you guys back there, but we'll be back here at 1 o'clock. Mics are hot. Stacy's up.
Right one? I assume the, the big one for going forward. Are we waiting for?
Start at 1.
Okay, very well.
With that, our district attorney, Stacy Eads, will now present.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, Chairman Bone, Honorable Board. I'll wait for everyone to have a, have a seat. I don't mind a little patience. So thank you very much for this opportunity to share the important work that we do at the district attorney's office to serve this community, holding offenders accountable, keeping the public safe, and upholding the rights of all. This is a overview of our estimated 24, 25 budget summary. As you can all see, there's a portion of this fund and budget for us does come from the county's general fund, but really, it's only 31% of the total budget for running the district attorney's office. We have a substantial portion that is from grant funding. Those are grants that we seek from within the office specifically. We also have a portion through Measure Z funding and other state aid programs and other asset forfeiture funds and other programs that are more offense-specific that do bring funds within the office to help keep us going. With those monies, we do have 60 full-time employees within the office. The office supports an administrative and legal professional staff, victim advocates, investigators, IT professionals, as well as the deputy district attorneys. Quite significantly, we have a wonderful administrative team led by Rochelle Davis and Betty Rosendez. This team processes literally thousands of law enforcement investigation reports every year, thousands of case files, thousands of subpoenas that go out to community members, witnesses within the, in law enforcement. They process our legal pleadings, and they provide information to the public regarding case status, individuals that call in wanting to know about what's happening with their particular cases. And also, we direct folks to other resources that may assist them in dealing with these difficult times they may be having. The district attorney's office is, bless you, the largest law office in Humboldt County. We run a very efficient and effective office. Another key unit within our office is the district attorney investigator team. Chief Kyla Baxley runs our investigative team. We currently have, I believe, it's 11 full-time district attorney investigators. We also have the benefit of having some seasoned, part-time investigators that assist in keeping the operations going within the office. The investigators have a large number of tasks. So they certainly take a lead role in critical incidents, response team functions, so things such as officer-involved shootings. Those are incidences wherein our investigators respond and take typically co-lead those investigations. The investigators also have a frequent key role in terms of locating witnesses for our cases. Locating witnesses is quite, quite a task for folks and sometimes takes investigators into a number of locations within our county, a very rural county that the public at large might not fully anticipate. So, and that's also in serving subpoenas. They provide direct investigation assistance through our child abuse services team, running the forensic interviews of children who may have been abused. The investigators also attend autopsies. They continue with the investigation for any criminal case that we file. So once it's filed with the courts, our office takes over any further investigative needs. So that's quite, quite a demand. Another, I guess, in look, thinking about things that our investigators do, this last year, on more than one occasion, our investigators had a direct role in, in helping to bring the remains of homicide victims back together with their loved ones. So these are some pretty impactful levels of assistance that our investigators provide the community. We also have, within the district attorney's office, a very robust team of victim-witness advocates who play a very important integral role in keeping the criminal prosecutions moving forward, assisting victims, always with our cases. We attempt to have victim trauma-informed-centered prosecutions. And so having our advocates working side by side with us is certainly key in making that happen. We have currently a team of 10 full-time deputy district attorneys. I would refer to this team as a small but mighty team of prosecutors that are fighting for justice for members of our community on a daily basis. They are always seeking to uphold the law in a fair and equitable manner, protecting the rights of all. Really, we should be with 18 of deputy district attorneys. That would be us being fully staffed. So in light of the fact that currently we're at 10 deputy district attorneys, we just lost two last week, we're close to 50% staffing level. I really do find this to be a, a critical staffing level point. We'll discuss that a little bit more down the road in my presentation, but frankly, it's just really not sustainable in the long run. But first, I'd like to look at the accomplishments that we've had over the last year within the district attorney's office. This is an overview of just looking at some of the basic daily operations. As referred to earlier, we handle thousands of law enforcement referrals. So in 2023, we handled over 6,000 law enforcement referrals from all of the Humboldt County law enforcement agencies. So each of those is processed, and, and we make a determination of what the appropriate course of action might be for that particular investigative report. So as a result, we had just over 1,400 felony filings in 2023 and over 3,200 misdemeanor filings within 2023. I did note that... I did note that our felony filings over the course of 2023 was the highest level of felony filings that we've had over the last five years. So, that's very significant, in particular, considering the small team that we have prosecuting those cases for Humboldt. Right now, we did just a little bit of a snapshot a moment in time in terms of looking at what are the active cases that the attorneys are litigating within the courts at this point in time. So, we have 691 active felony cases. There's just a little sampling of what types of cases those involve. So, we have, at present, you know, seven active murder and voluntary manslaughter cases. I think that broke down to five being actual murder cases and two voluntary manslaughter. It doesn't include vehicular manslaughter. We also have nearly 50 crimes against children. That includes both sexual abuse as well as physical abuse, 56 domestic violence felony level, over 100 burglar and robbery cases, 15 elder abuse cases, 13 attempted murder cases, nine felony-level DUI, and then over 41, bless you, environmental crime cases. Often, many of those are related to illegal cannabis grows that are potentially causing degradation to the environment. So, add those to 1,525 active misdemeanor cases. A substantial chunk of those are DUI offenses, so most DUIs are going to be at the misdemeanor level in terms of offenses. Humboldt County has a very, very high level of DUIs within our community, and sadly, a very high level of DUI-related deaths. Additionally, we have a lot of domestic violence, assault and battery, more elder abuse that's charged at the misdemeanor level, and 16 child abuses are most likely physical abuse, 18 other sexual assault-type offenses. And then, a big one that folks might not think about on a day-to-day is school truancy. So, that's something that's really significant that we also do in the District Attorney's Office, and I have to give kudos to Deputy District Attorney Investigator Martin Morris, who is very, very active in SARB and trying to address school truancy issues within Humboldt County. And as this board is aware, ACEs is a significant issue for our community to address, and that's one of the key ways that we can do that, by really getting in and trying to help address those issues that are causing certain children to not be able to have the ability to get to school. So, those are parents that are caregivers that are just not getting the kids to school, so trying to help address that issue hands-on. In 2023, we continued with successful prosecution of homicides and other serious felony matters. We took 30 cases to jury trial. As you folks are likely aware, most cases resolve long before they get to the point of jury trial. But again, for an office, you know, the size of ours to take 30 cases to trial, that's a pretty active, aggressive team of prosecutors that are taking those cases that really need to go before a jury for decision-making. As you can see, a number of those were murder and manslaughter. We also had a number of child sexual assault. We had a sexually violent predator trial, narcotics distributions, assaults with firearms. We took a number of-- nine misdemeanors out of the cases went forward were domestic violence, DUI, theft, and animal cruelty. It's a serious crimes. The tribal diversion program that I spoke of the last budget presentation is up and running, so that's pretty exciting. That was a number of years in the works to develop an agreement with the UROC Tribal Courts to allow folks that have offended and are charged with state crimes to possibly have the opportunity to move into the UROC Tribal Wellness Court Program. So, we signed the memorandum of understanding, I think it was in-- yes, it was in May of 2023. Since that time, we've had nine active participants that were referred to the UROC Tribal Wellness Court. So, this gives folks the opportunity to receive rehabilitative services and oversight, and these are culturally-appropriate rehabilitative services. And it's a really good, hands-on program that if-- and so far, we have seen some great successes that will hopefully deter those individuals from returning to the state court with other crimes or the crimes that were initially filed and brought them into the diversion program. So, we're really excited about that program moving forward, and I think it's likely to continue to grow and expand into other local tribes. It's something that I've had some early discussions with tribal leaders in terms of seeing what we can implement within their tribal communities. Another type of diversion that diverts offenders out of the criminal court system into an area where they receive services is the mental health diversion. So, a lot of this has come through changes of law and really expanding the ability for offenders to become eligible for mental health diversion. So, the question that the courts have to really look at is whether the individual that we're at issue has a mental health disorder that qualifies under the statute, and whether there's a nexus between the criminal conduct and that mental health disorder, and if we could create some sort of pathway to allow the offender to receive the necessary treatment, have a higher level of oversight, all at the same time addressing public safety. And so, what's the likelihood of reoffense? Are we putting the public at risk? Is the offender likely to comply and participate in the programs and plans that are being outlined for the offender or not? And so, most of these mental health diversion petitions that are filed with the court do necessitate a really close look in terms of what's the best course of action, taking into consideration rehabilitative needs, mental health issues that present, as well as public safety concerns. We also have continued on with the prosecutor-initiated resentencing program within the office, and so, this has been a program that we were one of, I believe it was nine counties, that were accepted into a pilot program, were the smallest county, were the most rural county, but it gave us an opportunity to look at our prison population, so those folks that had been committed from the Humboldt County for very serious offenses, and the kind of the underlying question being, is there anyone that's incarcerated at this time that if they were to be sentenced today, kind of under today's principles and philosophies and laws, would they have been given substantially less time in terms of their commitment to the state prison? So, looking at that as well as the rehabilitative efforts of the particular individual, and have they demonstrated sustained change in terms of their behavior? So, at this time, we have one individual that we're looking at quite seriously and doing a very in-depth review of the individual's behaviors while incarcerated, as well as the crimes that led to this individual's incarceration within the state prison systems, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward and provide the opportunity to an appropriate candidate, if that's appropriate, and in the interest of public safety. I have one part-time deputy district attorney that helps me with the prosecutor-initiated resentencing program work, and I'm very grateful for that as it's very, very time-consuming, but very important work. So, additionally, in terms of our accomplishments, we continue to get out into the community and provide educational awareness, public outreach, crime prevention, how to report your crimes, and also, let victims know the importance of reporting, what the other resources are, and the assistance that we may provide if a person is somehow involved within the criminal justice system. And part of that certainly is collaborating with our local partners. All of the attorneys, investigators, and our advocates are very involved in getting out into the community as much as we're able to do so. We also get out into the schools and try to engage in outreach and school fairs with our local schools, and we also are doing a lot of teaching. And when I say "we," we have district attorney investigators as well as deputy district attorneys that are teaching classes out at the academy for future law enforcement officers. So, hopefully, helping them learn the law and be the best that they can be when they enter the law enforcement workforce. The victim-witness program has been with us since 1982 and is a tremendous asset to, of course, the District Attorney's Office, but also the county of Humboldt as a whole. I want to spend a lot of time really just looking at the work that our advocates do for victims and witnesses within the community. We have a great team, and you can see that here in the year 2023, and this chart looks over, it looks like, five different years. In 2023, there was a total of 5,090 contacts that our advocates had in supporting victims and witnesses of crime. So, that's tremendous. It's over twice that of what it was in 2019. So, they're really doing a lot of hands-on work in making a difference for the community. And that shows, in looking at some of the words that have been provided by persons that have been directly impacted by serious crime and what they had to say about our victim advocates, I think it's quite worthy of taking a few moments to go through that. So, we have a victim from a domestic violence, and it was the attorney that passed on this information, the deputy district attorney that was working the case and had the support of a victim advocate. She shared for the victim that the victim had been a serious domestic violence victim for years. She had a whole support system with her. The family wanted her to pass along how wonderful the advocate was and how easy the advocate made this very difficult process. Turning to a sexual assault, child sexual assault victim, her words, "Thank you for believing us. I'm so grateful for you, everyone on your team who stood up for us." Another sexual assault victim shared, "I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your follow-through, for caring for the reminders, for the sense of not feeling alone through this process. You and your coworkers are appreciated. I'm grateful for the support. This situation has super-sucked, and while I have to allow the process to be the process, you have been a consistent light, so thank you." Another child sexual assault victim shared for her advocate, "Thank you. You all will always have a special place in our hearts. You helped us make the monster go away." A homicide victim's family, "We appreciate you guys so much and how compassionate and patient you've been with us." And from another homicide victim's family, "And a huge thank you to our victim-witness advocate, who we couldn't have gotten through the court process without." So, we are so grateful to have a team of advocates who go above and beyond. They are positive, active listeners who empathize with the clients that they serve. Some examples of things that they've done, you know, we had one advocate who went outside and met with a homeless client so that the client could hold on to her dog and her belongings rather than having her come through security and into the office and potentially jeopardize those things. Other advocates are sent going out with law enforcement on activities where we believe there might be human trafficking victims, so they're there to meet with the victims and embrace them and direct them to services and to help them. I think it's important, at this point, to note that there was a dramatic cut to the Victims of Crime Act federal funding. This will most likely have a direct impact on child advocacy centers as well as victim services that can be provided throughout District Attorney's Victim Witness Programs throughout the state. So, this is something that, you know, we don't have the final numbers on, but folks are certainly getting together, collaborating, trying to, you know, brainstorm in terms of what can be done in the event that these cuts come through. We've heard numbers that could be as significant as 41% cuts, so we can't lose this service. The positivity that we see from our victim advocate team is also outlined in the words that they had about the work that they get to do. So, one advocate, "I really enjoy the team approach of this job, whether it's vertical prosecution in the courtroom, coordinated with response to a victim with outside agencies, or collaborative MDT meeting. You always have a team beside you." Another, "I love the tight-knit relationships that can form in this office, in the DA's office, which make our response to victims in our community that much better. There's a team for you to rely on and to have your back. You're not alone." Another advocate, "Where to begin? I absolutely love this job. I love the program office, staff, supervisor, and the larger umbrella organization of the District Attorney's Office and its staff. I love the advocates have been shown appreciation by being reclassified from the program specialists to administrative analysts. Thank you, Board, for helping to support us in that. I love the balance, time for staying, organized, networking, training, team-building, and self-care. I love that I could go on, but I'll leave it there for now." And finally, I think, quote, "Quite significantly, we give a voice to the once voiceless." Turning to accomplishments of the Child Abuse Services Team, as this board is aware, the Child Abuse Services Team is a multidisciplinary team that's comprised of members of the District Attorney's Office as well as folks from Department of Health and Human Services, specifically Child Welfare Services as well as mental health. We have trained child forensic interviewers that are provided, thankfully, through Child Welfare Services. We also work with social workers, not only within the Child Welfare Services entities, but also tribal social workers and tribal advocates. We work very closely as well and are well-supported by the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, who send advocates to most, if not all, of our child abuse forensic interviews. So, we're very, very grateful to our partners and our law enforcement partners as well within the community that keep the Child Abuse Services Team up and running and serving the families and children within our community. Over 2023, our numbers in terms of interviews completed are pretty consistent with what we saw in years past. There was a dramatic decline during COVID, despite the fact that we did learn that child abuse numbers went up during that same time period. But, so, in 2023, we conducted 99 forensic interviews with cast. We're well on our way, somewhat sadly, really, now in 2024. And I just say sadly because ideally, we would have no need for those interviews. Another important team, a multidisciplinary team that we have within the office of the District Attorney is our EVAS team, so working on elder and vulnerable adult services teams. So, EVAS is funded largely through Measure Z. So, the District Attorney's Office works directly with the Adult Protective Services as well as local law enforcement, largely the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department, and collaborating, getting together, and ensuring that information sharing really is one of the biggest components and having those communications regarding who are the folks that are in need, based upon your experiences out in the field, what cases are we seeing being forwarded within our office, and where should we kind of channel and focus our resources in helping these folks out? So, you can really see a dramatic difference in terms of when we have the EVAS team, which is in the now, so we have, you know, just shy of 30 cases in 2023, whereas back, you know, in 2016, where we didn't have the robust team up and running, the numbers were dramatically lower in terms of elder and vulnerable adults who were being helped via the EVAS team and potential criminal prosecution and holding the offenders accountable. prosecution and holding the offenders accountable. An exciting, from my perspective, new grant that we have and that allows us to have a vertical prosecution team to address the organized retail theft issue within our community and really is helping us to take a deep dive look at the retail theft at large within Humboldt County. So we have a team that's a dedicated prosecutor as well as a dedicated district attorney investigator and an admin analyst who are working together to look at the incidences of retail theft. And they will be shortly out in the community, having and engaging in conversation in terms of how we can best help and serve our businesses. We're encouraging folks to make reports of thefts that occur within their businesses. In developing this grant and applying for it, we did some research and learned that lots of retailers, you know, understandably, someone, you know, given up in terms of making those reports to law enforcement when thefts occur. But we are hoping to work with our retail business owners and encouraging them to make those thefts so that we can really target those offenders who are repeatedly stealing from the businesses within the community. And the other important aspect of this program is that we have like kind of multiple ends of the spectrum. So kind of the accountability measure for your more sophisticated repeat offenders. And then also, we're working on developing a diversion program for the lower-level first-time offenders that hopefully we can steer away from the criminal justice system. So we just recently brought on the district attorney investigator that makes our team complete. So we're very excited about that. And there's a lot of energy and a lot of drive. So hopefully we can get out there and make a difference and help work on our local economy by supporting our local businesses. Another new grant program within our office that we're pretty excited about and have another dedicated team is our Violence Against Women Vertical Prosecution Team. This particular grant, again, allows us to dedicate deputy district attorney as well as a district attorney investigator to handling those cases that, as it says, involve violence against women. So this particular grant allows us to have a team that has a smaller level, smaller number of cases on the caseload so that the victims of these particular cases are given the time that they really need to help them get through this process, to make a very victim-centered approach in terms of the prosecution. The cases that make their way into this particular caseload are prescreened. Things such as lethality factors are taken into consideration, whether the offender issue has a offense history. So we're really trying to prevent these very serious crimes from becoming far more serious and potential, frankly, homicides. So that's a very great aspect of the office as well. Turning now just to our goals, they're very similar as what we've been doing. We want to continue to enhance community safety through the prosecution of crime in a fair and timely manner. We will continue to prioritize violent crimes and those crimes that are perpetrated against our most vulnerable victims. We are seeking to maintain and expand a highly competent team that's committed to serving with integrity, compassion, and respect. We want to continue to engage in community outreach and education, continue to build our organized retail theft program, continue to address elder abuse, and work on the education reduction and prosecution of fentanyl-related crimes. We want to work more to protect local businesses with the consistent accountability measures for repeat offenders. We want to enhance our data collection capabilities through the interface with the court system. That's triggered in part by data transparency and really just taking a closer look of the demographics of the folks that enter into the criminal justice system, not just as offenders, but also as victims and witnesses and who's involved. And so we're kind of excited about the potential of learning more about the work that we do. We will continue to collaborate with our local law enforcement and county information tech to complete electronic report submission and expand utilization of prosecutor by carpal. That's our case management system. So we're, you know, slowly but surely expanding those functions of our case management system that are, you know, working towards becoming entirely electronic file-based within our office. So that's pretty exciting, too. And then, as I just discussed, collecting the demographic characteristics of those involved in our local criminal justice system. Tremendous challenge that we do face, and we, as some of the earlier spokeurs outlined, we're taking new attempts in, you know, advertising and reaching out and becoming a lot more assertive in terms of like trying to recruit and also retain those that are here within the district attorney's office. At this time, nationwide, there are historically low applicants for deputy DA positions. So it's just, you know, there are less folks wanting to go into that particular area of work. We also live, obviously, in a very rural community. We're very isolated. We have limited access to services. So I've lost a number of professionals based upon the fact that they just can't access the services. They love their job. They love their coworkers. They love the work that they did for the community. But they needed, you know, specifically, I can think of three, due to the lack of adequate medical care, went to other areas where they could get those services that they needed. So we're working hard to get the word out. I have an admin analyst who's been really helpful in helping me develop this little flyer and getting it out to all the law schools. And we're just letting it be known that there are openings for what I think is one of the best jobs that you could do. And it's incredibly rewarding to be able to serve the community and make a difference. So hopefully, we will be able to bring on some more deputy district attorneys. And this isn't an issue that's, you know, isolated to Humboldt County. Seventy-five percent of the deputy district attorney offices across the state have open recruitments. They're all trying to hire attorneys. So we're sort of competing with all those same folks. And I think there's presently, at least five of those counties have recruitment and hiring incentives. So that's something that I will be looking at more closely and maybe coming back to have some more discussions with you folks about. Might not be the best time, I know that, but we need to keep the office staffed. So, you know, and just looking at, for Humboldt County, it's like we are small, we're rural, so it's always been kind of a training grounds, you know? And then we have the larger counties that swoop in and bring in our, you know, well-trained, hard-working attorneys and pay them more. And so that's just sort of always been part of the reality, but it's particularly dire at this point in time. So just wanted to highlight that. Our office is supported by a number of grant funds, sources through, is that line there? And then also just kind of taking a look at the types of victims that we help throughout the community. And they are provided a number of resources and services. So things, you know, obviously counseling, sometimes transitional housing, helping folks change their locations during a time of need so that they can be safe. And we help people all across Humboldt County and of every type of person. So it's like crime touches us all. And I think it's important to keep that in mind as well. My next slide's not going. My PowerPoint might have just decided time was up, which is fair. Thank you. My last slide. So, you know, we are committed to continue to serve the Humboldt County. We are here for you. And we just really want to highlight the fact that we're 100% committed and we're very grateful for the privilege and opportunity to serve the county of Humboldt. I do want to give a little bit of a shout out to Rochelle Davis, who's my business manager. And she's really the backbone of our office. So she helped me put everything together and keeps us going. And so thank you for the privilege to serve as your district attorney and run this great office.
Thank you.
Questions?
Well, see any. It's a good thing. Oh.
Well, I'll just make a comment that, you know, I'm rounding out my fourth year and having seen the impacts that your department's made in my district and in Humboldt County, I'm very appreciative to you and your staff and to Maggie previous to you. And just really, you know, it's expensive. It costs to prosecute, but it is so necessary for our community to keep people safe. So I just want to say thank you to your department.
Thank you.
You're getting off easy.
All right. I'll take it. Thank you.
Run while the running's good.
Zacko?
That's me. Sorry about a whole crew with me.
Let's see that.
I ran out of spots. I'll stand here. So I'll sub out after we're done. I promise I brought all these people. We're going to keep it brief. I got the clicker. All right. Good afternoon, Board. I'm Zack O'Hand, Director of Human Resources for the Human Resources Department. I've brought some of my staff here with me. So I'm going to make my part brief. I like this as an opportunity to give my staff an opportunity to talk with you, and so you don't have to hear me talking all the time. So with that, I will get going here. So just a brief agenda of what we're going to go over. I'm not going to read everything that's on the slide. Again, we're really good at not being brief, so I'm going to be super brief today and let my staff talk. But you can kind of look at this. We're going to talk about our Argfas that we're going to have, and then some exciting things that we're working on, just some successes. Talk a little bit about just what we do, because not everyone, I think, knows exactly everything that HR does. We'll touch on our DEI and OD work that's being done, as well as the Risk Management Division and some great things that are happening there. And then I will close it out. So I will talk about our Argfas. So we have two Argfas that we're putting in. We had to put in an Argfa last year as well. This is for our Personnel Division, which is made up of six positions, so extremely small. And one of the Argfas is the one you'll see below, the 141,000. That is just to retain current staff, so to keep us at like the pretty minimal staffing level we already have. There is an additional funding request for the Assistant HR Director position of $80,000. And how that works, again, very briefly, is the position actually sits in the risk management budget, but the Personnel Division retains an allocation from the general fund to cost allocate over to risk management. So if you're thoroughly confused, please feel free to reach out to me, and I can explain it in more detail later. If I had to prioritize both of those requests, I would put, obviously, the one that has current staff in it, the second request you see there. That's just to retain the few analysts that we have, an HR technician, and our program manager. This is just kind of a brief overview of the general fund allocation that Personnel gets and has gotten over the last, you know, five years. If you go back a little bit further, just to give you a little bit of history, essentially, it's remained pretty constant or stagnant, I would say, for probably the last seven years. And so that's what's made it difficult in having to come and request additional funds from your board. I wouldn't say we're really requesting additional funds. It's really just getting us hold to keep what we have. And with that, I told you I was going to be brief, I'm going to pass it off to Program Manager Catherine Lorenzo.
Thank you, Zack. Good afternoon, honorable Board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As Zack stated, I'm Catherine Lorenzo, Program Manager overseeing HRIS, which is within that small general fund-funded team. And I just, out of the multitude of services that my team provides, I'm going to highlight just one or two to keep this brief and go into some of the accomplishments that we've made this year and then talk about our goals for next year. Excuse me. This year, we conducted a survey of county employees, asking them what they felt was important when it comes to having access to their employment information and empowering them to make changes to their personal information. After an impressive response from over 500 employees, we learned this. Employees want electronic access to their personal employment information, including things like current position, pay rate, their step, paid leave balances, what benefits they currently have, direct deposit receipts, and important tax documents like W-2s and 1095Cs. Employees also want a greater degree of control in updating their own personal information and employment information. This means no more documents sitting on a supervisor's desk for review or getting lost on the path to being updated or manually entered multiple times into multiple different systems, increasing the potential for inaccuracies. And these updates include things like changing an employee's address, their name, their emergency contact information, updating W-4 and D-4s, which are for tax withholding, enrolling in or updating voluntary deductions like direct deposit, membership dues, and savings accounts, and enrolling in or updating voluntary benefits, including health insurance. Each of these highly desired options can be accomplished through a self-service portal. In the upcoming fiscal year, we plan to implement some of these options with a module of our finance system called Employee Online. And this is going to be possible thanks to your approval for the funding that we needed to make this happen in '24, '25. Providing access to an employee's self-service portal has been proven to boost employee morale and will improve the confidence the workforce has in the county as its employer. These self-service options not only cut costs related to handling and manually updating documents in central service departments like HR, but also significantly decrease costs associated with handling and approving these documents at the department level. As we continue to navigate fiscally challenging years, modernization and process improvement will be a critical component to accomplishing our goals. And if you could, go to the next slide, please. I'm just going to briefly talk about our new employee orientation. And I'll start with just mentioning the success of this orientation. I think it's important to recognize the contributions of your board, the CAO's office, and HR staff that have made this an overwhelming success. A few months ago, we started collecting feedback from the attendees at the orientation, and every response that we received reflected both a five-star rating and positive feedback for our teams. We plan to continue to use this tool as part of our onboarding process and will make modifications as appropriate based on employee feedback. But I think that it's important to note what a success this is. Employees are feeling like, you know, they're onboarding in a very inclusive environment and more connected to the employer. So thank you for being part of that success. And with that, I will defer to HR Analyst Bethany Hubbard.
Thank you, your honorable board, for the opportunity to speak, to reintroduce myself and for those watching.
Top liner, please.
Oh, can you hear me better? Okay, sorry. All right. Thank you, your honorable board, for the opportunity to speak, just to reintroduce myself and for those watching. My name is Bethany Hubbard, and I'm one of the HR analysts in the Personnel Department. We're a small team of about 14 folks for approximately 2,300 employees, and today have the opportunity to showcase some of the work that we do for our 21 county departments. I'm not going to get into too much detail, but as you can see from the slide, we have a number of duties to support our staff and departments in many ways. In the analyst role, I'm primarily responsible for administering our recruitment process, resolving personnel-related matters, classification compensation work, investigations, MOU and personnel rule interpretation, labor relations and ADA accommodations. Our tech team is really the linchpin in onboarding our staff and drives our HRIS processing, as well as being the outward face of our department, handling a number of inquiries daily related to this long list that you see. And our techs are the folks who make most of the changes in our personnel system. see. And our techs are the folks who make most of the changes in our personnel system go into effect, and we really couldn't do much without them. So I just want to take a moment to appreciate them. Furthermore, I would like to highlight that we now have two certificate holders in our department from the Association of Workplace Investigators, and we hope to put more of our staff through these trainings, because having these available to our analyst team will and can save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars by keeping more workplace investigations in-house. Just to visualize what we do, you can see this employee lifecycle chart here. HR assists employees at each step their whole entire time with the county. HR is with them from the very start of their experiencing by administering the recruitment and onboarding process, driving initiatives to improve retention and facilitate, providing employees opportunities to grow within their career, and finally landing at offboarding. We can't deny that eventually staff are going to depart from county service. Additionally, something I want to highlight is that we're eager to know from those departing staff what could have been improved in their county experience, so that way we can improve the workplace as a whole. And that will bring me to my next slide. So I'm excited to share that HR has successfully launched an exit questionnaire survey, and we're in the final stages of completing a report on the findings from the first year. We started the survey in January of 2023, and over a year collected 79 responses. While that data collected isn't statistically significant and is only illustrative of the staff who separated last year and then voluntarily completed the survey, we believe that there's a lot of value in sharing this feedback with our departments and with the community. Most of the questions related were around satisfaction with wages and benefits, the work environment and supervision, and work-life balance and opportunity for growth. Overall, those responses were overwhelmingly positive, which is great, but that doesn't mean that we don't have areas to improve upon and that we shouldn't try to improve those areas anyways. Some areas that we noted that have a lot of room for improvement are satisfaction with supervision and having expectations for staff set for them. Many staff also reported that they didn't receive performance evaluations in time, or they never got them, and this is really critical for setting those expectations with staff, as well as helping them grow and letting them know what they're doing well. Utilizing staff abilities was also noted, and we should endeavor to capitalize on our staff abilities, not only to gain efficiency within the organization, but also to help employees develop within their own careers. And lastly, the big elephant in the room is compensation. Most staff didn't feel compensated adequately on the survey. Surprisingly, though, most staff separated from county employment for reasons other than compensation. This means to me that although there are challenges in addressing compensation, and it's on a high list for things that we can improve, we can focus on addressing other areas of the employee experience to reduce turnover. And I think that we all know that data can tell a story, and this is the story that I pulled from that data to share with you all. But for anyone interested, the full report is going to be available online and shared with our department, so that way they can home in on areas that they can improve. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to our Organizational Development and DEI Manager, Dr. Jeremy Clark.
Thank you, Bethany. Good afternoon, Chair Bone, Board Members. My name is Jeremy Clark. I run the Division of Organization Development, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. This slide will give you a little bit of insight as to our primary responsibilities. On the Organization Development side, we're really charged with building organizational capacity. What that looks like is really accomplishing the workforce and operational excellence goals that are outlined in the Board's strategic plan. On the DEI side, we conduct a lot of education and learning opportunities, but really that's about facilitating belongingness across our workforce. And then, of course, on the EEO side, it's really just about compliance and completing mandating reporting. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Nikki. Thank you very much. As we reflect back, I am just completely astonished by the amount of accomplishments that we had and a lot of success. And you see some of them here, and I'm not going to read them all, but what I will do is highlight a couple of them. We were able to respond to our workforce desire for increased professional development activities through creating a strategic partnership with the Eureka Chamber of Commerce. This partnership will allow our county staff to take a myriad of courses, as well as access some custom-created content at a very, very reasonable price. We look very much forward to leveraging this partnership to build organizational capacity. In addition to that, we've delivered seven learning corners, some of which we partnered with our affinity groups. Those learning corners produced over 750 aggregate hours of learning and education. We also launched two new affinity groups, one that really caters to American Sign Language and that population, and the other that really caters to the employee population that is over 40. So really excited about that. Of course, we expanded our DEI training and offering, making more education available to staff. And we also completed our EEO certifications for some of our departments. And this is really key, because this is done primarily on behalf of law enforcement departments and allows them to secure state and federal grants. If this certification does not happen, those grants are not awarded. So if we can go to the next slide really quickly. Continuing with the accomplishments, again, we completed our mandated federal EEO four reporting. Really excited about launching our Pilot Supervisor Academy that is taking place right now. There's a wonderful cross-section of folks representing many different departments and roles and responsibilities. The core of that academy is really cultural and emotional intelligence, because the academic literature suggests that these intelligence types can be used in the workplace, and particularly in a workplace with increasing diversity. So really excited about that. In expanding our partnerships, we partnered with Humboldt Area Foundation and secured a $15,000 grant. That allowed us to put on the Supervisor Academy, so we're really excited about that. Additionally, we participated and helped coordinate a succession planning initiative with two of our county departments to help position them for future success. We look forward to expanding that in the future. We coordinated some training with LCW. And then probably what we're most excited about is we were able to partner with the City of Eureka to hold a DEI workshop, and that was open to not only just county staff, but community partners. And I'm very pleased to say that we had representation from over 10 local organizations, and that was quite a success. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Nikki. Thank you very much. And I'll just wrap up today really by sort of talking about our goals for moving forward. We hope to build on those accomplishments that I just elucidated in the previous slide. But in order to continue to do that, we do need additional resources. So those resources are in the form of human resources and also additional funding. But I am, so you will see in the budget, there is a request for an analyst in our division to sort of support our work moving forward. But I can tell the Board that if granted, I'm very confident that that additional resource will put us in a position to really take advantage of additional grant funding opportunities that will allow us to continue and expand on our current work. And to put that into perspective, there is a grant right now from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation for one quarter of $1 million that greatly aligns with our strategic plan, that unfortunately, due to capacity limitations, we won't be able to get the application in by the deadline. But if awarded additional resources, then I'm confident that we can continue in making the county of Humboldt a wonderful place to work. So that wraps up my piece. That's pretty brief. I'm going to go and pass it to my colleague, Risk Manager Amanda Phillips.
Good afternoon, Chair Bone and members of the Board. My name is Amanda Phillips, and I'm the Risk Manager for the county. I'm here today because I wanted to highlight a few of my office's areas of focus and success this fiscal year, and the analyzation of those successes in the following. The Risk Management Team has worked diligently to review key performance indicators to make critical decisions related to all aspects of our insurance programs. From employee benefits to the county's self-insured levels, we have reviewed and analyzed data in order to make the best product delivery decisions with cost effectiveness in mind. With our limited time today, I'm going to speak to you about our dental program and our general liability self-insured retention. As a member of the risk-sharing pool PRISM, our choice for dental insurance carriers has been limited for decades. Since 2015, when I started in risk management, I have heard numerous complaints from employees and dental providers related to network availability, claims delays, and perhaps most importantly, our previous carrier's requirement for employees to pay full service costs and wait to be reimbursed when utilizing an out-of-network provider. This was obviously a prohibitive stumbling block for numerous employees in search of care. Because of these factors, among others, Human Resources made the decision to utilize a new dental carrier in 2024. Ameritas' dental product eliminates many of the barriers previously in place, and we continue to analyze data. We are finding that our employees' out-of-pocket costs have decreased from 34% to 25%, and monthly premiums billed to departments have decreased as well. There have been some transitional stressors with this change. However, I am proud to say that risk staff continues to work productively with providers, employees, and Ameritas directly to mitigate these issues as they arrive. Additionally, you may have seen a survey sent out recently regarding a mobile dental provider we are considering engaging. In this effort, we are trying to bring services directly to our employees without dental providers. We are committed to continuing to monitor and review all data to make decisions and take advantage of other opportunities which will increase the satisfaction and use of our valuable employee benefits package. Another area change we are here to discuss with you is related to our self-insured retention for the county's general liability program. When explaining a self-insured retention, or SER, I liken it to a common insurance program deductible, and it is the dollar amount which must be paid by the county before our risk-sharing pool will respond to a loss. Humboldt County SER has been set at $100,000 for several years, and as the insurance market continues to harden, our premiums paid for this program have soared. Senior Risk Analyst Michael Schrader is here to discuss our decision to increase our self-insured retention and the associated cost benefit.
Good afternoon, Board. As mentioned before, the county is in the midst of a hard market for insurance with numerous billion-dollar disasters hitting the United States over the last several years, 18 and 2022 alone. And the recent changes in the courts with higher litigation payments has put the county of Humboldt in a hardened market and increased costs. After discussing these hardships with various departments and with the support of the Risk Manager and Human Resources Director, we took a deep dive into the county's claim history and looked at ways to lower our costs. After looking into the number of claims over our current $100,000 SER level, it was determined that approximately 98% of claims were below this level, and it made financial sense to increase our SER in the hopes of lowering our premium. After meeting with the CEO of PRISM, our insurance provider, and our risk consultant, who has 30-plus years of insurance knowledge, our efforts were confirmed, and thus we reached out to PRISM to increase our SER from $100,000 to $200,000, which is within our legal rights. We're only allowed to double it each year. So the $200,000 was the max we could do in this upcoming year. Based on initial premium estimates, we are anticipating saving the county nearly $1 million off of our upcoming premium. We are anticipating that with the financial approval of the Board for our budget request, that we will be able to add some staff members to continue looking at solutions that can save the county millions during the current financial crisis. Thank you for your time, and I will turn it back over to our leader, Zack.
I'm back. So in closing, I just wanted to show you the entire team. I know it's kind of small. You don't have to read all of them. It is a very small team that we have, serving a lot of employees. And we know at this point in time, it is extremely difficult for every department. You're hearing that all day. You know, and we're, as you can see, looking for opportunities to make more efficiency, use technology to do things better and more efficient, and do things that can save the county money. We're actively looking for ways to do that as much as we can. So I wanted to just highlight what our team looks like for such a large organization in our county. And hopefully, as the budget situation gets better over the years, we'll be able to increase that team, because there's a lot of work that we can do to decrease liability for the county. And it's not always easy to quantify that. We were able to do that a little bit today. And with that, I will close and ask that you have any questions. We can answer for you.
Bring it back to the Board. Anything? See, oh, excuse me. Supervisor Row?
Oh, I just wanted to express appreciation. You all have a really dynamic team that cover a lot of ground, and I'm extremely appreciative of how hard you're working to bring us, you know, up to date with technology and with processes. And, you know, I constantly see innovation coming from your department, and I'm really grateful for it. Thank you.
And the only thing I was going to ask is, I know, I had a lot to read this weekend. I'm hearing from some people that are writing grants in like an hour with AI. They input the grant, the needs and everything else. Have we, and I'm sure you have, have we looked into that completely? Because I keep hearing staffing and computer screen's so much easier.
I can kick that over to Dr. Clark.
I can say that I have definitely not looked into that, just because I lost Crystal two weeks ago, and it's really just been a process of sort of getting re-acclimated with all the tasks. But certainly, that's an avenue that we can explore.
I'm hearing, anyway, I hear there's an application just for grants that just knocks it out of the park. So I just, and don't ask me, I still miss my flip phone, so.
We certainly have used AI, and I think it would be short-sighted to say that AI isn't something that will be utilized going forward. So I appreciate that. I hadn't heard about that, and we will definitely be looking into that.
Thanks. See ya.
Thank you much.
We're going to be much quieter now, because we're going to the library.
Good afternoon. Is my mic on?
I believe so.
Good afternoon.
There you go.
Supervisor Bone, Chair Bone, and Supervisors, CAO Hayes. I'm Chris Cooper, and I have the honor of serving the people of Humboldt County and providing dynamic library services. Let's see, where's my PowerPoint? Is that up there, Nikki? Great. Okay, thank you. As you probably know, the library is supported primarily through property tax revenues. And in addition to that, we receive generous grant support from the Humboldt Library Foundation, the California State Library, the Friends of the Redwood Libraries, and independent donors. The library serves communities with library branches in 11 locations, and then also with a bookmobile that serves the kind of far-flung communities in Humboldt County and the rural areas. We provide a dynamic array of resources, programs, events, and materials to serve the community with varying interests. And we can't do it without volunteers, community-based organizations, agencies that help support us with program functionality that we don't have the internal capacity to provide, and volunteers. Volunteers play a vital role in the life of the library. There's two of our volunteers from the Arcata Library, Alan Michaels and Ann Kilby. Challenges. All right, so there's a group photo there. We were honoring employees for their longevity. The employees you see above there have served in the library, the three in the middle there, former Library Operations Manager Rhonda Wittenberg, Senior Library Assistant Bill Minkie, Rhonda 50 years plus, Bill 40 years plus, Michael Logan, another member like Rhonda of the Library Leadership Team, 37 years, and then our Executive Secretary Anna Jordan also retired in the last few months. So that was kind of an exodus of 160 years of experience, and much of it with the Library Leadership Team. and much of it with the library leadership teams. So, one of our challenges is recruiting and providing the capacity we need to, uh, provide this same high-level ser- customer service and community engagement that we're dedicated We were very fortunate, I was able to, uh, work with HR to recruit a new library operations manager from Boise Public Library. We have Sean Hinman, had twelve years of experience there as the assistant circulation supervisor, and with, uh, support from the Humboldt Library Foundation and some training and a real commitment to succession planning, we made an internal hire for our acquisitions and technical services division manager. We have, um, longtime librarian Corinne Balkovic stepped into that position. We still have seven vacancies, and, um, uh, three of those are leadership positions. We have oral examinations in the next couple of weeks, we're optimistic that we will get outstanding people. These were nationwide recruitments, uh, we use databases like the American Library Association Job Board, and then locally, uh, Lost Coast Outpost, and, and put a lot of energy and time into creating, um, robust, uh, job flyers to let people know how wonderful it is to work for the Humboldt County Library. And if we have some internal candidates that take those, uh, positions or they're successful candidates, we'll have additional vacancies. We continue to evolve, um, I know that isn't the new, uh, strategic plan there of the board, but the, uh, your board and the county library strategic, strategic plan help inform our planning, and it's really the collective knowledge of our staff and of the public that makes the community and the library a better place and in a way we can best serve the public. What did we do this past fiscal year? Well, one thing that I believe is incredibly, uh, you know, compelling, is that with limited staffing and less people, we were able to increase our program attendance and even exceeding our pre-COVID, uh, statistics. Last year, we had about sixteen thousand, um, participants attend library programs for adults, families, intergenerational programming. At this, at the end of March, we were at, um, a twenty thousand, and we're not even at the end of the year. We're providing, uh, you know, programs in places that had no history of library programming, uh, Rio Del, Willow Creek, Blue Lake, so, um, I wanted to thank your board for, in the past, uh, supporting the, uh, increase in FTE. We had, uh, folks that were not quite one-point-oh, they were like point-seven or point-eight, and that extra, uh, bit of FTE allocation helped them, uh, with, provide them with the capacity to do outreach and have, uh, increase their programming. And we, even though, while we're doing that, we want to kind of continue on that, uh, trajectory of, uh, providing, um, programming and, and thinking broadly about spaces, if there's not enough room in the library, we'll maybe use an outdoor space. This is a, a program that took place, um, outside, uh, Blue Lake, uh, library, Blue Lake City Hall. Here's a storytime in Trinidad. Another thing that we believe is really important is attracting new, um, library users, and we're, uh, letting people, uh, know about our services, our resources, our, um, electronic databases, eBooks, e-audio, how are they going to find out about that? Uh, so, we're trying as much as we can to, uh, make ourselves a presence at, uh, different festivals, uh, community and events, uh, places where, uh, we can attract new library users as well as connect to our, uh, current supporters. The California State Library has provided us funding for, uh, critical maintenance and life safety, uh, funds to improve, uh, accessibility and, uh, also, uh, the way we use our spaces in Arcata, Eureka, and, uh, Fortuna libraries. Uh, we are in the planning process still, but we, uh, should be breaking ground on the Arcata project in the early fall, and then, um, we hope to follow up in the winter or early spring with the Fortuna and Eureka projects. Also, the California State Library, uh, provides funds for, uh, English as a Second Language Instruction and, uh, family and adult literacy. Well, this is an accomplishment, and it's even, uh, now even better, and I just found out this week that we, uh, have, can fully staff our Humboldt Room to, uh, mirror the hours of the library's open hours at the Eureka Library. Uh, we have, uh, lots of individuals working on, uh, genealogy, uh, some are writing books on Humboldt County history, and just last week, we, uh, trained two new docents, uh, longtime Humboldt historian Milt Figley, and former Humboldt County Historical Society President Catherine Mace is now a member of that team, so, uh, it's very exciting that we can, um, have the Humboldt Room fully operational, and it hasn't, uh, been fully staffed since, uh, twenty-eighteen. We introduced, uh, College of the Redwoods Adult Education Classes, American Sign Language, uh, at the Arcata, Eureka, and Fortuna libraries, and we're offering, uh, basic, uh, computer skills at the, uh, Eureka Library. This has been, these classes are free, uh, enrollment is very fluid, and, uh, it's been very popular. We, we started a couple of years ago with one, uh, sign language class, and Eureka was so popular, we increased that to two, and that was so popular that we, uh, worked with, uh, extended ed at, extended ed at College of the Redwoods to offer it at, uh, two other locations. I know that housing is a, a challenge for, um, individuals in Humboldt County. We, uh, hosted a program with Area One Agency on Aging, on, uh, sheltering and, uh, inside homes to promote, uh, home share program at the Eureka Library. We're working with, uh, Two Feathers Native American Family Services to offer our Leap Into Literacy program at two new locations. And we've expanded our ability to, uh, oversee the, our bookmobile program, our courier service, and hopefully introducing our new Library at Your Door program, again thanking the board for seeing the importance of having a program coordinator to oversee those, um, that division. Our numbers are looking good. Um, our statistics continue to rise in terms of, uh, library checkouts. Uh, we are projecting out to have about, um, you know, three, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand Uh, e-audio and eBooks, uh, are continuing to increase about, uh, we, we project another sixteen thousand over, uh, where we started. If you look at the numbers pre-COVID, they, they're just on a gradual increase, kind of leveled off a little bit, and, um, they still, uh, continue to rise. Um, we need to be nimble, um, I have an outstanding staff, and, uh, really, uh, we're very responsive to what the public requests in terms of what we buy when we make purchases. Programming, like I said, uh, that continues to rise, I think we're right around twenty-four thousand with attendance, I project thirty, and you can see where that has gone over the last several years, so, uh, a really dedicated team, and, uh, they've really raised the bar, and like I said, offer, offering programs and locations that had no history of library programming. New cards, uh, we're looking, last year we had a little bit over three thousand, the year before that, twenty-two, twenty-three, about thirty-eight hundred. Uh, we're at three-eight hundred already, I project probably forty-two hundred, um, at the end of this fiscal year, so more people are finding out more about our services, both electronic services and our collection, um, attending events, people more and more are ready to get out and, um, interact with others, uh, meet up, um, and, uh, participate in our programs. Our goals, um, investing in our facilities, I had mentioned the Building Forward Grant to benefit the Eureka, Arcata, and Fortuna Library. We would like to improve our facility system-wide with some help from the Humboldt Library Foundation in terms of making them more attractive, more comfortable, if we can, set up, um, layouts that are more conducive to, uh, small groups meeting, um, also, uh, ways that we can offer programs and, um, uh, you know, ways of displaying the collection to, uh, merchandise the things that we have and let people know about them. Want to keep, um, recruiting more and more volunteers. I wrote, I had this as a goal and on the slide, and then, you know, just a couple weeks ago, I'll probably have to pull this out of our, our goals for FY twenty-four, twenty-five, now that we have, um, the Humboldt Room Tuesdays covered, but, uh, we still want to offer more ways that the volunteers can help, um, contribute to the life of the library. We are so close to having broadband at all our locations. Uh, Ferndale is kind of the last holdout, uh, AT&amp;T has handed the circuit off to Frontier, so if any one here knows about any nudging they can do, that would be wonderful.
He's got six, six miles of broadband funded down to the
Oh, okay, great.
So broadband is going to be going into Ferndale, they got funded for the whole six miles.
Oh, that's great, thank you Supervisor Bone, I appreciate that, and, um, that's something we've been working on since two thousand and five, and, um, this will, uh, put all of our libraries on, uh, broadband services. We also will launch our Library at Your Door program either, I'm looking at, I've, I've been thinking probably June, late June, early July, to, um, bring library materials to individuals that have accessibility issues or transportation barriers or can't make it into the library when the library is open. Uh, we'll pilot that program in Eureka and Arcata and Fortuna. We've already had a couple of, um, kind of, uh, beta test runs to test our navigation software and see how the program's working so far. We're, a lot of people excited about this. This comes with great support from the Humboldt Library Foundation, who paid for the vehicle. Building internal capacity means, uh, providing opportunities for, um, professional growth. The Humboldt County Supervisor Academy is back, uh, they're running a pilot program. I participated in it in two thousand and five, and it has been dormant, and, um, it looks, uh, like this will be a great way where we can help internally, uh, build our leadership skills with our current leaders. Uh, for the first time in my memory, both, uh, Friends of the Redwood Libraries and the Humboldt Library Foundation approached me and said, "Hey, Chris, is there any way we can, uh, support, uh, staff development? Is, is, can we do anything in terms of funding to help, um, send your teams, uh, to conferences?" And I said, "Oh, absolutely." So, um, I have, um, you know, three individuals who went to Columbus to the, uh, Public Library Association Conference in April, and then I have four, uh, that was, uh, supported by the Friends of the Redwood Libraries, and then the Humboldt Library Foundation is sending three, um, of my team to the American Library, uh, Association Conference in San Diego in, uh, late June, early July, I think it is. Okay, um, we want to provide venues for local artists to, um, exhibit their works. Uh, the McLean Foundation, uh, funded this, uh, library gallery in the lobby of, uh, the Garperville Library. Uh, the branch coordinator, Joanne Wilson, has, uh, shows book there, I think through almost, uh, the end of, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, they're monthly, they're rotating, uh, the RAA has the Hagobian Gallery in the Eureka Library, uh, the Arcata Library has started to, uh, exhibit artworks, um, I think it's, I think art, uh, visual arts are a really important part of our community, and any way we can, um, do more with community art, uh, in our spaces and celebrate that, um, hopefully we can have all of our libraries, uh, have a gallery, uh, by the end of the next fiscal year. All right, um, another way looking at sustainability and self-sufficiency is creating a seed library where, um, uh, individuals can come into the library and get, um, seeds to grow, uh, their own vegetables, uh, fruit, uh, flowers make their spaces, uh, you know, beautiful at home, and, um, also with the rising costs of groceries and transportation, just, um, be more ecologically aware, um, we'd like to, uh, pilot a program in McKinleyville this year. So there's sustain, sustainability grant funding through the California State Library will apply for. All right, and thank you very much for your time, any questions? Supervisor Row.
Thank you. I know when we met, you talked about the, um, library's upper floor and some of the ideas that you have for it, and I know it's, um, a bit tangential to this, but I, um, you know, as we're kind of figuring out county space needs and all that, could you, could you say a bit more about what the ideas are?
Yes, we would love to have a teen-designated space. I think there are an underserved, uh, population, uh, in libraries, and I think with, um, uh, community services in general, so, uh, we would love to have a dynamic, um, place for teens to gather, to have, uh, study spaces, to have electronic resources, to have, um, technology, uh, to support their interests. And then, um, uh, another, uh, program, and, and you've probably heard this too, is our meeting spaces. Where, where, where can I meet? I'm, uh, you know, looking to have a, a small meeting, uh, do you, do you have a space for us? Uh, I want to meet with a study group, I want to meet with, uh, somebody who is an entrepreneur, wants to start a business, so, um, that, that is our other idea, is to create some small, um, uh, spaces to either promote small business entrepreneurship or, um, studying and meeting in small groups. Thanks Supervisor Roy.
Well, uh, it's, I guess it's really no surprise that, uh, many of your employees are some of the longest longevity in the county for employees, so that really speaks to the dedication of, of your employees, and, uh, I also want to thank you for the, the work that Elizabeth does out in Willow Creek, sharing the space for me, uh, for my once-a-month office hours out there, which people very much appreciate. Used to do them out in the cold on the street, and it's very nice to have that nice warm space in the morning to be able to do that, so thank you for continuing to help me be able to do that.
You're welcome, absolutely, yeah. And this gives me a-
Don't forget Shoshana coming to the B Street to, uh, one thousand Jefferson and being there frequently during the free produce distribution at ten AM on Saturday.
Room, so.
Oh, wow.
But Frances was, she passed away at 103. She was very, very involved. She headed up all the helicopters and air pilots in the 1964 flood because of her knowledge of the terrain in Humboldt County. Think about that. So, anyway, the library award is named after Frances, and I thought I'd recognize her because I miss her. And I think that was the only thing I said to you when you got hired, was keep Frances happy, and I'm happy, because if she wasn't happy, I heard about it. So, and I appreciate that. She lost her sight about six years ago, and she worked for another couple of years just cleaning things.
Yes, she did, and we appreciate her very much.
That's a dedication to a library.
Yeah, and I want to thank also Deputy C.A.O. Clower for helping me with the budget right next to me here, so, thank you.
I thought she was going to break into an ADA song about the libraries there for a minute. Thank you very much for everything you do, and as a tribute to Ryan Sundberg, if we don't hear any complaints, that must mean you're doing a good job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment? I think we heard it.
Yeah. For Camp D, I'm out of order again.
You're fine. Imagine that. Seeing no, seeing no public comment. See you guys on the...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but on the 20th on more budget. And do we need...
Chair Bone, can I get a motion, please?
That's, okay.
That'd be great.
To accept the staff reports.
I accept the staff report.
So removed, no, so motioned.
And to continue to May 20th.
So moved. Oh, you moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Hi. Thank you.
Unanimous. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
And speaking of vim, vim, and vigor out there, Holly.
I couldn't be nicer.
It's great, thank you.
The vim, vigor, and vitality team.